They're having so much fun. How about we get started? Okay, folks, if we could call our meeting to order and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, into this vote with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Roll call, Kate.
Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. All right, so first up is our audience of citizens, first on the list, Mr. Cornell. Welcome back.
Cordell Budria, 115 Skinner Road. I'm here tonight, speaking on behalf of my organization, Grassroots Berlin. We're a bipartisan community organization, dedicated to community service and civic engagement. Since mid-July, our group has been denied the ability to host or sponsor events at the Senior Center, even something as simple as bingo. We were originally scheduled to host bingo and our sponsorship there was canceled. The Town Manager's Directive restricted hosting to healthcare organizations until a new policy was approved. But to this date, no such policy has been adopted just yet. At the September 16th meeting, the mayor suggested that Grassroots Group wanted to host bingo there and to quote, "That's something that just can't happen there." That statement, along with comments discouraging seniors from discussing politics, raised understandable concerns about whether this was some type of viewpoint-based decision or if it was really a neutral policy matter. Some good news, though, yesterday, I got note from the Senior Center Director informing me that we are allowed to schedule bingo finally after the November election, which is great, but it does raise a few important questions. Why the change from after a policy to after the election? Why was Grassroots Berlin named and denied access since July? Why were only healthcare organizations allowed to host events? And was that policy consistently enforced? Why weren't any concerns brought to the Senior Center Director who could have addressed them immediately? Why has the Commission on Aging only been asked to weigh in now, months later, and only a couple of weeks before Election Day? And why has the Senior Center policy, which appeared on the council the past three times and undergone revisions, not been added to tonight's agenda? Grassroots Berlin is a bipartisan organization. Our members include Democrats, Republicans, and independents, united by a shared goal of strengthening the community. When a civic group like ours is told it just can't happen there, it sends the wrong message to residents about fairness, inclusion, and transparency. I respectfully ask that the council clarify its position and ensure that no organization, regardless of viewpoint, is ever excluded from civic participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sally Kelyandre.
Oh, hi.
Oh, via Zoom, I'm sorry. I wasn't afraid to stand up, sorry about that.
Okay. Sarah Kelyandre, 60 Apple Tree Crossing in Berlin. I am the town historian and a member of the Berlin Historical Society. It is my great pleasure to support Rich Gagliardi and the Berlin Land Trust's efforts to purchase the stone house and property that was once owned by Nelson Augustus Moore. Moore was a noted artist of the Hudson River School. He was educated in local schools for a time and raised his own family here. Many of his paintings are of Kensington and can give insight into what life was like here 150 years ago. He was also a prominent businessman and farmer and was also the designer of the first Civil War monument in the country, located at our own Kensington Congregational Church. We cannot ignore the importance of art and culture in our lives. A similar museum to what the Land Trust's dream is at Weir's Farm in Wilton, Connecticut, which is our state's only national park. An attraction such as that could bring in countless visitors to our town and be an asset to local business. Berlin has a long, rich history and we would be wise to embrace it. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Gagliardi.
Good evening, Mayor.
Welcome.
Commissioners. My name is Rich Gagliardi. I live at 1278 High Road in Kensington, section of town. I was asked to read a letter from Lorraine Stub, who couldn't be here tonight. The Historical Society's board is meeting tonight, and so several of them were unable to attend. So if you don't mind, this is to Mayor Mark Kozinski and the Town Council regarding the Nelson Augustus Moore House and Farmland Proposal from Berlin Land Trust. Writing on behalf of the Berlin Historical Society, whose members are in full support of Berlin Land Trust's project to acquire and preserve Moore Farmland and Nelson Augustus Moore home on High Road in Kensington. Kensington section of Berlin. The land is part of Berlin's agricultural history and was the subject of paintings by Nelson Augustus Moore, a nationally known 19th century landscape painter and his son Edwin Moore. N.A. Moore captured the rural beauty seen from his land, such as Turkey Hill, apple orchards, streams, and ponds. His family operated a mill producing cement in a time when it was a new building material. Scenes of the mill pond, orchards, and hillside are abundant in N.A. Moore's paintings. Edwin Moore favored painting farm animals and pasture settings using watercolors. They were not the only painters who found inspiration in the area of Kensington. Notably, Isaac Porter and Claude Stevens lived close by. There is also a connection to the brilliant poet, linguist, and geologist Ames Gates Percival, who grew up in a house still standing on what became Percival Avenue. One painting of Turkey Hill by N.A. Moore shows the Percival House and Kensington Congregational Church were visible from Moore's land. Moore's knew Percival, his writings and his work of other artists who took inspiration from the topography and beauty of that part of Kensington. N.A. Moore's first job was as a station master for the first Berlin train depot on Four-Rod Road. He then started one of the first photography studios in Connecticut. His iconic images of the fallen Charter Oak tree and the Beckley Tavern belong to the Connecticut Museum of Culture and History. The N.A. Moore home is unique to this area and that it used local stone and cement in its Victorian-era design. The house, artist's studio, and barns are currently obscured by an overgrown vegetation. We would love to see the buildings viewable again and open for artist workshops and shows. The whole property could be used for passive recreation and educational purposes. The property reminds us of Weir Farm in Ridgefield, Connecticut, the home farmland and artist's studio of J. Alden Weir. That property became Connecticut's first national historic park. We envision visitors walking the land while absorbing the history and beauty of the area. We also imagine artists painting en plein air, as Moore did. Preserving the property would draw tourists to central Connecticut, protect open space, and celebrate the beauty of Moore's found, of Moore's found close to home. While other painters of Moore's time focused on the grand scenery of the Adirondacks and Rocky Mountains, Moore so deeply appreciated what we had here in Kensington, that he concentrated on the local pastures, orchards, and ponds, woods, and hills that he loved. His paintings transport us back to time when Kensington was a rural paradise. We know people long, we know people long for memories of when Berlin and its Kensington and East Berlin sections were predominantly farmland. Having the property open to the public would give us a unique opportunity to share local history with the public and inspire people to protect remnants of rural life that we have left. Preserving the Moore Farmland, the barns, artist's studio, and home would honor Moore's legacy, provide a unique place in central Connecticut to wander in peace, contemplate the beauty of nature, and the art of this remarkable man. Sincerely, Lorraine Stub, Secretary of the Berlin Historical Society. I can switch my hat to Rich Gagliardi, Vice President of the Berlin Land Trust. Along with Mayor Kozinski, I attended the celebration at the Berlin Meeting House this past Saturday. In his presentation, Representative Jack Fazino said, "We have to preserve our heritage for future generations to experience and enjoy." To be honest, that's why I'm here tonight, to ask for the mayor's and town's council's support of this important conservation project. The Moore family made numerous contributions that significantly supported the growth and development of our little central Connecticut town. Arts, culture, and education, family of painters and educators, Orland Hill School, industry, one of the first cement mills in our country, manufacturer of sundials. I just recently learned that it was the Moores who built the first dam that created Apurgood's Pond. Farming, they created many innovations to their orchards, vegetable farming, and they raised award-winning Guernsey milk cows on the farm. I genuinely hope we can conserve the Moore Farm and Stone House on High Road so future generations will be able to learn more about the many contributions by this truly amazing family. One of the many goals cited within in Berlin's plan of conservation and development is to prioritize the placement of N.A. Moore's property on the National Registry of Historic Places. If we are successful in acquiring and conserving this historic property, that will be the very first task we undertake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, David Voight? Vo, sorry.
Hi, David Voight, 14 Caniburch Court. I'm on the board of the Berlin Land Trust.
Oh, welcome.
I am here to support the purchase of that property. I can't really add much to what Rich said and other people have said. It's a gem. It would be fabulous. For the Berlin Land Trust to own that property and use it for the people of Berlin and beyond.
Thank you. Thanks. Marie Lipsky?
Hello, Marie Lipsky, 405 Southington Road. I've been a resident for over 30 years from the Farmington Valley. I have a great appreciation for history, coming from the Farmington Valley. And I have learned from the good folks of the Berlin Land Trust about this Moore Farm that I always loved. I remember the horses there, okay? It was, it was a nice little sidetrack to go by. But as it was brought to my attention, there's a lot going on there, a lot, and it's a gem. And if it's gone, it's gone forever. Whatever would be built on the additional land would be a blight. Look up the definition of blight, and that's what houses there would be. People are talking about saving the environment. I'm 101% behind that. My yard is a certified wildlife habitat on purpose. And we don't know what we will lose until it's lost. So please, this place, that guy, he was the first guy, he took it upon himself to photograph, and it was not easy to photograph, revolutionary soldiers, the last ones alive. Look up their photos, there's only six. It's him. And he photographed, yes, the Charter Oak. You don't understand the meaning of the Charter Oak. There was a contingent of men that came down from Massachusetts, English, probably used the Rocky Hill Ferry. Another historical thing. Good stuff going here. They came to West, they came into Hartford to a tavern, October 31st, 1687. And if it wasn't for the Wadsworth fellas, two brothers from Farmington, our charter would have been taken. Bet you're nodding, our charter would have been taken, and we would be part of Massachusetts. That's the history of the Charter Oak. Real short. I'm trying to keep it short. But the fact is, this man, Mr. Moore, he took pictures of that, and that's what's on our state quarter. That's what's on iconic. That was him. You know, there was a lot going on there, and the more I read, the more my mind, it's in Wikipedia, Kensington, Connecticut. It's in Wikipedia.
We've made it, we've made it. We've made it, we've made it, yes.
This place should rub shoulders with the Hillstead Museum, Theodore Dade Pope, Mark Twain House, Harriet Beecher, Joseph Webb House, West, yeah, West Hartford is loaded, Old Weathersfield is loaded. We should be rubbing shoulders with that. That's, we're right in there, muscle on in. That's, that's what we should be, please, intact. Keep it intact, please, all 27 acres. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Great. Is it John Lowery? Hey, John, sorry.
My name is John Locary, I live at 33 Cory Lane. I just want to speak very briefly. As an art historian and art critic and teacher of art history, I never knew anything about the fact that we had a significant 19th century American painter who spent all of his life in Kensington, who studied with, studied art in New York City, knew some of the great painters of the last century, and decided to come back here and live, both because of his affection for the town of Kensington in Berlin and because he felt this was an eminently paintable landscapes. Also had no clue, hidden behind the shrubs and trees on High, on the High Street Road, that this magnificent house, this architectural marvel of concrete and trap rock and oyster shells existed, which certainly deserves to be on the list of historic sites in Connecticut. So I'm here just to applaud the efforts of the Berlin Land Trust in conjunction with the Trust for Public Land to preserve these 27 acres and this absolutely marvelous house. The uses to which all of this could be put are many and varied. I mean, the land itself, potential walking trails, hiking trails, the return of a farmer's market to Berlin, all of that seems very appealing to me. The house itself, though, as a center for, as an educational center, as a center for lectures, for art classes, seems to me a very doable, a very doable thing that would make a great deal of difference. Just as in Old Lime, once they restored the Florence Griswold House there, people started to go to Old Lime to attend the lectures and events there. The same thing could happen here. So I really feel that, in many ways, what we want to do is encourage people to come to Berlin. And I also want to point out, the Land Trust is preparing a Wikipedia page on Nelson Augustus Moore himself. They would come here in the same way they would go to Old Lime or go to Wilton, Connecticut, go to Ridgefield, and we'd be a little better known. And let's also remember that what often follows art and cultural enrichment, our other, other benefits can accrue to that. So to have visitors to Berlin who might want to stop and have lunch at our many fine eateries would be also highly, highly desirable. This is a no-lose situation for us. These 27 acres and this house, which I'm ashamed I never knew about, will really be a great addition to Berlin's cultural capacity.
Thank you. Thank you. Melissa Davis? Nice, nice.
My name is Melissa Davis, I live at 53 West Ridge Terrace in Berlin. I volunteer for the Land Trust and I agree with everything that everyone has said. But I would also add that 27 acres includes habitat for wildlife. And that's very important to me, so I hope the town supports it. Thank you.
Thanks. Joseph Card?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors.
Welcome.
My name is Joseph Porcaro, reside at 22 Robbins Road. My purpose tonight is to strongly advocate for the conservation of the 27 pristine acres of open space on High Road. This project is unique because it contains an historical component of the Moore Stone House. So I kindly request that you do not pass by this unique opportunity and support the Berlin Land Trust in acquisition of this property. I'm also on the Board of Directors of the Land Trust and their treasurer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Catherine?
Hello, everybody.
Hey.
Mary Catherine LaRose, 26 Woodruff Lane in the Kensington section of Berlin. Say that. I came to talk about two items on the agenda. Item six, which a lot of people have already spoken so much about. I'm just going to say something personal about living on Woodruff Lane for 50 years. When I started to gain a couple pounds, I decided to start jogging. And so High Road in that section has always been my jogging route. Now I do more walking than jogging, but I still go by there. So I want to say that as our town is growing, and we know that economic development and tax base and everything is really, really important, we also have to try to preserve, if we can, those parts of our town that have the most, just the most history or something that everybody feels. So when I used to jog there, you know, 45, 40 years ago, 30 years ago, there was a cow pasture on one side, and then there was the historic homes on the left side. And there were horses in the pasture next to the stone house. The horses are gone, they could come back if we get this property. We could maybe get a horse, a therapeutic riding school there again, or whatever. The other side of the street was sold. Sadly, the cow pasture's gone, and it was gone before that because some other developer messed it up. But anyway, so now we have nine houses along High Road, and it has changed the complete character of that area. So now when I jog, I don't look that way. I look left, and I look at those beautiful historic homes that are on, on the left side and the pasture. And I really think to preserve the character of not only our part of town, but just Berlin in general, if we can keep that piece and a few other pieces that we don't want to lose. Because as you said, Ms. Lipsky, when they're gone, they're gone. So that's my only thing on that. The other item I did want to mention is on item seven, you have the Fontanella parcel, although it doesn't say that on there, whatever. And I know, I think it may already be purchased, but I think it's some type of a text agreement or change or something on it. I'm gonna, oh, I'm gonna go back and say, I'm a, I am a member of the Berlin Land Trust. I'm not on their board or anything. And I'm also a commissioner on the Conservation Commission. So this came up at the Conservation Commission meeting last week, where they talked about, in, in acquiring that property, it was kind of a joint effort of some town money, a grant, and I think it was Berlin Land Trust. I do believe Berlin Land Trust also had a part in it. Okay, so in the grant, I believe there is a requirement for public access. So we talked at the table, the commissioners, about the importance of access to these open space properties that we have. And, and so I know that this property is going to connect to a property where there's a very important metacoma trail is. And so the intent is to connect another trail to that metacoma trail. But if you don't have access, and I don't mean access like walking all the way from the Chamberlain Highway access. I'm talking about access further. So I know there's some issues with, there's some houses up there and some streets up there. But I, I'm really hoping that, and that, well, not only hoping, but it seems like you have to look for a way. Just a couple of, maybe a couple of cars can go there, and then they can start their, their hike there. But I do want to, you know, reiterate the fact that that grant does have a requirement for public access. So I want, hopefully, that the council and whoever else's decision-making is going to look hard at a way that the people who live up there aren't going to be inconvenienced, but at the same time, a couple of people, maybe a couple, you know, can go hiking there and can park their car and hike from there. So those are my two issues, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think we did, didn't we work on parking up at the top? I thought that's what. Yeah, I thought, I thought we talked about, yeah, we worked on something for parking. We did, we did consider that to figure that out, so we'll work on that. And Mr. Greg Starr is on the list. Yes, sir.
I made sure that my phone didn't go off, I think. So I'm Greg Starr, 59 Hudson Street. All right. So this first part is on GRB, Grassroots Berlin. I know that I explained the last time I was here what we were all about, and Cornell mentioned a little bit too. But I, so basically, like Cornell said, we're a bipartisan group of Republicans, Democrats, and unaffiliated voters that simply said are focused on doing good things for the people of Berlin. Having said that, I'm trying to understand why we weren't allowed to call bingo before the 14th, if, knowing what we're all about and understanding there that hasn't been decided. I know, you know, the policy. But I'm trying to understand, if, if we are what we are, why would be, why would we have been eliminated from going there? That was my question. I don't know if anybody has an answer for that, aside from the fact you're still working on the policy, but.
That's kind of the answer.
Okay. So if that were the policy, though, will we still be eliminated, knowing what you know about us?
I, I don't want to get into a policy discussion with you now, but, but yeah, we're gonna have it on the agenda again, and we're gonna obviously talk to the Commission on the Aging too. So we're still working on it.
So, well, I'll still hold you out, we can do bingo, we can call bingo the seniors.
Yes.
And they'll make both of us keep in line.
Yes.
Just let you know.
Of course.
So.
It wasn't about the bingo, it was never about bingo, but that's okay. All right.
So I, I try to be careful about what I hear and what I say. At the last meeting, I wasn't sure, I actually heard Charlie say that we, that someone or we doctored the tape. In soccer terminology, I gave him a yellow card, which is a warning, calling out behavior. I was disappointed to hear him repeat the same conspiracy theory at the meet the candidates session at the Senior Center. It appears you may have learned nothing. We did not do any. We did not do anything to the tape. What I did hear you call us were propagandists, and we're not that either. In fact, I heard you explain, Charlie, to Cornell after the meeting, that he didn't know anything about GRB. And that was proven by us, by him calling us propagandists. And fortunately, me being me, you get a red card, but you don't get to keep this either. But the purpose of it is, we have to be cognizant of what we say and what the meaning is, and I try to understand what I'm saying before I speak. And I do my homework on it, too. So, I mean, that's the end of this. I mean, you've taken a beating, and I get it. But moving on. All right, so back at the last town council meeting, I heard Mayor Mark explain that he gets complaints all the time about, you know, people's concerns, and I get that. It's the top paying job, and it's what you get to do.
Every day.
Every day.
Every day. Different issues, thank goodness, but, or not a good thing. It's not ever the same issue, that's for sure.
And you were concerned about the fact that senior member, senior center members about being unsafe for the senior center, which at the time seemed plausible, okay? But then, you know, being a slow thinker, I started to think that if that were the case, why didn't you call Tina or inform the Commission on Aging? I mean, if somebody has problems, why wouldn't you do that? I mean, I'm not the mayor, but I mean, I would try to figure out what the heck's going on and protect the people. And to the previous point, why didn't you include the Commission on Aging and in the process initially, but you're now meeting with them on the 27th, I think, right? All right, segue. Back to the meeting, the candidate session at the Senior Center. Mayor Mark, Barbara Gombats asked you, what was the status of the Senior Center Community Center? And your answer was that the Community Center, I mean, the Senior Center is staying right there, which I think was a newsflash. I don't know, I didn't hear that before, but now everybody knows.
That's probably the 50th time I've said that, but yes. And Barbara's heard that many, 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 many times.
That's the 51st.
Yes, I probably is.
We'll keep track.
Might be more, actually, Greg.
It's okay. 71? I don't know. So you also said that the Y has been given the opportunity to see if they can build, can build it, and it was voted on by the Board of Finance and the Town Council at the last meeting. However, I believe what was voted on.
Not the last meeting. Not the last meeting.
Well, whenever.
Yeah, yeah, a while ago.
Yeah, but you had said that whenever, on the tape, so I'm just taking, anyway. So, but I think what was voted on, quite honestly, was to approve the core samples to be taken at the site that wouldn't be needed by anybody building there.
At that point in time, yes.
Okay, but what you said was that the Town Council and the Board of Finance approved for the Y, which is a misstatement, I believe.
No, there's no misstatement. This occurred maybe, I don't know, six months, a year ago? Well, so, I mean.
I mean, we haven't given the Y permission to build there.
No, we haven't.
Exactly what you're asking.
Correct. We haven't given them permissions, but.
We definitely haven't done that.
But what has occurred has, we had, well, I mean, an exhaustive study. I don't know, people think like we just make a decision off the top of our heads, which never occurs on this council since I've been here. But we had a, I don't know, six month or a year study with a bipartisan group of folks headed by Brendan Luddy, and we looked at, you know, community centers, senior centers all around the state financially and activity wise and every way we could. And remember, this all started, it came to us from the, from the Park and Rec Commission. That's who started it. We started with a 72,000, 72,000, I should just write up a paper and pass it out every time because I've said this so many times. But anyway, so we started with 72,000 square foot building. I don't even know if New York City has a 72,000 square foot YMCA, but nonetheless, we worked on that a little bit. Obviously, the costs were prohibited, and we, I think it went down to 50 after we sent it back to the Park and Rec, 50,000 square foot building.
Was that the same cost that it would have cost to build the original one with a downsized space? Look, I understand what you're saying.
Yes, so in the end, just to finish, so in the end, we, you brought it up, so in the end, just, so we're talking about facts, because I hear a lot of misinformation out there, unfortunately, but we decided that was too expensive. Board of Finance, they told us that, and the Y had come to us. They had come to us a while ago when this was coming up, and they have said they want to build one in Berlin. So that's an option we have. We just finished the site work. We gave them the, you know, what the results were, which, yeah, all that stuff. So we're going to let them see what they could do, and from there, we will, you know, ultimately make a decision. Certainly, if a senior community center, if the town, if the Y doesn't work out, or we decide it's not the right fit, then, you know, we would go to, you know, obviously the Y, I mean, if the town building gets built, whether it's just an indoor pool or whatever it is, as I said, at the Senior Center, over, you know, anything over $5 million goes through a referendum, so that would be down the road, but let's see what the Y does. That was the thought of the council. The whole council agreed, let's look at the Y and see what they could do, which would save the town millions and millions of dollars.
I didn't get that out of the meeting, quite honestly, but that's.
Yeah, well, you know, a lot of people haven't got it out of many, many, many times we've said it. Go read the report. It's a 100-page report on looking at other towns and how much money they're losing.
I read that.
Yes.
I understand, no, so we went, you went through this twice.
Yes.
First time.
Think more than twice, but that's okay, yes.
Second time.
Yes.
Okay, and we, and so.
Yes.
Donna Bovee and some people from Parks and Rec and Brendan Luddy, okay, went out and visited all.
Board of Finance, yeah. We had a diverse group.
Yeah. I'm not saying they didn't do it. I'm just saying that I was just.
And you read the conclusion of their report.
So, listen.
So you know why we're looking at a different option, maybe? Just as a thought, you know?
I got it.
Yeah.
So I'm, I like to chase windmills, okay? And I want to understand why not, and what, if we really have a vision to do something, why don't we figure out a way to do it?
That's what we're trying to do.
I understand.
Yeah.
But I'm not done.
Okay.
But no, I'm just saying, listen, we don't know what's going to happen, you know? It's easy to say that it's going to cost, I'm just getting lost here, but it's going to cost, you know, it's taxes versus the Y, all right? I get that. But I just, let me close so we can.
They'll put words in anyone's mouth, but no.
So finally, this is, I mean, I really would like to understand how the sausage is made on the council, all right? Mayor Mark, I know that you set the agenda, and that you also say the council reaches a bipartisan decisions 90 to 90%, 90 to 95% of the time. I'm just wondering, do you have a working committee of Republicans and Democrats working on the Y, or is that just you?
There's nothing to work on. The Y's working on it. I'm not working with the Y. Everything they tell us they're going to do, they bring to the council. We're all on the working committee for the Y.
Okay, that's fine.
That's how it works.
Okay, that's fine, so.
And any town project, not just the Y.
Right, that's fine.
Well, I, you know, just so we understand the charter, because I don't think a lot of people seem to read it. It's one vote. I'm one vote on the council. I can't pass anything by myself, because I read these things out on social media, and I'm really thinking like no one wants to read the charter, which is our constitution. So we're all a committee together. We have, we need a majority vote to pass anything, just so you know. No one's working with anybody. It's all in public, it's all transparent, it's all here.
I get that, too.
Well, that's not what you said, but anyway, that's okay.
No, I'm just asking how the sausage is made.
Yes.
So listen.
Read the charter.
I appreciate the discussion. So I also said before, I understand that the Y versus taxes, and quite honestly, from my, from my opinion, it's been that way since the beginning, all right? And this is things that I've seen, whether it was the presentation at the Senior Center, okay? Your, your, your projection up there, having, you know, the Senior Center on one side, and, you know, taxes, taxes, and the Y, none of that. I'm just simplifying it, okay? But what I'm trying to say is, is that the right answer? You know, do all the, what do all the townspeople want? Will the Y have a diving area? You don't know that yet. I heard somewhere that it may not be.
I don't think they have their plans yet.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, does the Y, so does the Y want to build it? What is the timeframe for them to decide, and what does that mean for us? We need to be working together, seeing if we can make things happen versus killing them before they get out of the box. I will leave you with this. There seems to be a lot of singular decisions being made about what someone thinks is best for everybody. I'm just saying, is that the right answer?
What?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, but what are those singular decisions made by who? So we're specific instead of just a general statement.
You, Mayor Mark.
Yeah, how would I make that decision?
Listen, you, let's go back to the Senior Center, okay?
Yeah.
And things that happened there. You determined, okay, that there were issues there, which is fine, it's your right, all right? But why, I mean, I would just say, why not take it the next step?
But we brought it to the council, though. I didn't make a decision.
But why, if you were that concerned about the seniors there being afraid, all right, or concerned about that, why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you bring it to Tina or to the Commission on Aging? That's one. The other thing is, I'll take it back from going back to the whole process for a Senior Center Community Center, all right? From the beginning, you've been about the Y, not directly, but all the way through. Listen, when the first plan came out, no, no, Donna Bovee came to you and asked if we could present at the mayor, the architect's rendering, and you said no. At the, that's at the Berlin Fair, we wanted to do it, and you said no.
I don't think that's true, sir. I don't know where you're coming up with this stuff, but.
I think I was there when it happened.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's true.
But anyway, listen.
No, 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 not anyway. You're not going to stand up here and make false statements. Well, I don't understand what this is about. You know how many times we had town meetings about the Senior Center? You know how many people came to those meetings at the high school? 20 people. The same 20. No one in the town came. No, 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 no. That was about the Senior Community Center. Don't tell me what it was about. Were you at the meeting? I think you were. Did I see you there? Did I see you at one of those meetings?
Yes, you did.
Okay. But how, we had two of those with the architect.
Okay.
No one came. You know how many times people came to town council meetings? Very few.
I was at the, when he, when he explained the whole thing.
Yeah, there was 20 people there, though.
Can I just explain one thing?
Sure.
What you said.
If it's the facts.
Okay, what you said in the meeting, meeting the candidates, all right? You said this, only 20 people that came, and they were from the swim team.
Most of them were, correct.
That's what you said.
Yes. Well, that's who was there.
That's fine.
And that was here, too, several meetings.
But, no, but just to be fair, all right?
But, 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 wait, to be fair, that, those are the facts. What is fair or not fair?
You said, no, no, you said that 20 people came. You didn't say it was the swim team right here. You said it was the swim team when you talked, when you.
All right, well, I didn't say that. Well, I don't know what the point of all this is.
I'm just saying that, you know, if you were to look at the underlying factors of what's happened from the beginning.
Yeah.
You've always either overtly or inadvertently, or covertly, I guess, been for, you know, the Y, because I understand, you don't want taxes. I mean, fine, and they can provide it.
A lot of other people don't either, I think.
I don't say they don't. I'm just saying, I don't know if we've gone far enough to see if there are ways that we can do something that all the people want. That's all I'm saying, okay? I won't take up any more of your time.
Well, all right, yeah, I just, I don't understand the point of all this. This has been gone over many, many times with many, many public meetings, with a lot of comments from the public. So it's all been done in public.
I'm not saying it's not done.
Yeah, you have. You said covertly. That's insulting. Nothing's been done covert. I don't want to debate with you, but stop with the covert stuff. I mean, that's just wrong.
All right, listen to me.
I know the election's in two weeks, but that's enough of the politics. Please, please stop.
It's not about that.
Please stop.
No, listen, it's not about that.
Oh, my goodness.
Let's say underlying reasons. I don't say you were covert about anything. Everything's been in.
You just said covertly. Should we play the tape back? We can read it later. Yeah, okay.
I admit, if I misspoke, okay? What I'm saying is, is that all along, that was, that was your hope. That's all I'm saying.
No, you don't know what my hope is. No, you don't know that.
You're right, I don't know that.
We have to bring all the options to the town, not just one.
Right.
Yes, that's what we're trying to do, Greg.
I understand.
You, apparently, you don't agree with one. I get it, and that's your right to do that.
All I'm saying, Mayor, is that we need to think about what everybody wants.
Yes.
How to get there, right? I'm not saying you're not doing your job.
We do.
All right, that's fine.
Yes, that's why you're all here speaking tonight. We listen to you.
I also appreciate that I got more than three minutes, and I'm sorry.
Can I just say to be clear? I don't think anybody has said yes to a Y yet.
Yeah.
I certainly have.
No, we have not.
There's nothing yet.
Well, thanks for saying that, Kay. I mean, my goodness, we haven't said that.
Right.
No, right, but, yes, thank you.
But I would also say for the record, I have no issue with Grassroots Berlin calling Berlin before November 7th, so.
Calling bingo?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that what I said?
Done on the list.
Yeah, calling bingo.
Anyone else wants to speak that's not on the list? Yes, sir? I got a couple folks. Yeah, you'll be next. You're next.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
How are you?
And town, is it councilors or commissioners?
Councilors.
Yes, I'm from Newington, and my name is David Mett, and I just, I'm from the Appalachian Mountain Club, in the program chair, and I'm also on the Berlin Land Trust, and I'm wanting to speak in favor of the acquisition of the Moore property.
Thank you. Appreciate it, appreciate it. Yes, ma'am. How are you?
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight.
Absolutely.
I'm a 36-year resident of Summitwood Drive. My purpose tonight, being here, supporting my neighbor as well, Doug Sanders, is to express my sincere desire that you not put a parking lot at the top of Summitwood Drive. And my reasons have nothing to do with property value, they have to do with safety for our children. Our children do not need a spot to congregate on a Friday night, to sit out in a remote street and drink and do drugs, okay? I've seen it, I've called the police in Friday night, and they're up there on the trails. If you add a parking lot to that area, you are asking for trouble. I think it's our responsibility as citizens to worry about the safety of our kids. We all know kids don't make great decisions, and it's not safe up there. It's dark, it's remote, it's in the woods. It's a great spot to party. And I understand that the trails are combined in a certain way, but I feel there's other And I understand that the trails are combined in a certain way, but I feel there's other alternatives that the council can look at. There's property down on Orchard Road. There's property up at Stanley's Old Farm up there. There's connectors on Chamberlain Highway. All those lead in there as proper existing parking lots. So why not have it in an area that is more visible? Cars go by, police make routine runs through Chamberlain Highway, through Orchard Road. Those are main arteries through our parts of the town. And I'm sincerely here worried about the kids of this town. We don't need to lose one child to one lousy mistake that they make one night. They can get in a car, go drinking, do drugs up there, and then tear out through the town, hurt themselves and somebody else. I've lived there, I've seen it, I've called it in numerous times. There's four-by-four vehicles. There's vehicles that are parked there from people with out-of-state plates. We've had mail stolen from our mailboxes. We've had all kinds of people come up in our area because we are so remote. And by the town approving this parking lot, sincerely, I, from the bottom of my heart, feel something terrible is going to happen up there. And when we call the police for a response, when actual things do happen, I could sit out on my front porch and wait twenty, thirty minutes before I see a police officer. That's not response time, as far as I'm concerned. If that was my child, or my loved one, or my husband, my children, my grandchildren, that's not good enough. We're on the end of the town. If you have police that are casing our area from the Chamberlain, I'm sorry, from the Berlin Turnpike, by the time they get to points, let's say even Sage Park, and they drive all the way down to the end of Summit Wood Drive, takes a while. It takes a while. So again, I'm not coming here as just strictly a property owner saying it's devaluing my area. I'm all for exercise. All my kids grew up in this town. They all played sports. They all still lead a very active life. I enjoy having my grandchildren on my street, and I enjoy having them come and visit and be able to take them to a safe spot to walk up to the street. But if I feel there's a bunch of weirdos parked up there, guess what? That restricts me on my own property that I can't even leave with my grandchildren and take a walk, ride our bikes, our scooters, walk up on the trails. It's a safety factor. It sincerely is a safety factor. We've had so many things go on over the years. Again, I've been a resident there for thirty-six years, and I'm sure all the old timers that were first residents on the street would back me up. We have a younger demographic of kids on the lower part of the street that are in elementary school, middle school, high school. They walk by themselves home because the bus does not go up Summit Wood. Now we're asking for trouble for these kids walking. We have kids on bikes now. We have powerized bicycles, and they're riding on the street. Do we want more traffic going through there? We have four-by-fours. We have Jeep mud trucks. And this happens Monday through Friday, and it happens on the weekends. How many times are we expected to call and ask the Berlin Police to respond?
Every day, if they're there.
I've done that.
And they're not responding quickly?
They don't respond quickly, no.
Well, that's not good to hear.
Get out my front porch, wait for them to respond.
Yeah, that's not good.
Watch for my watch. Twenty, thirty minutes is not a response time. Someone's hurt up there. I'm also concerned, look what happened over elevation, the fire last year. Okay? Are we going to ask for more trouble? What if there's, what if there are emergencies that occur up there? Why can't we put a parking lot in a more visible area?
Yeah, we haven't made that decision. But is there, is there a trail for vehicles that they cut through up there, too?
No, it's all blocked off.
It's all blocked off, right?
It's all blocked off, and every time we block it off, and the town of Berlin, I've asked them, they put barriers up, and the kids push it all away. And they find, and they break through and make their own trail to re-enter.
Yeah.
And this has gone on for years. How much are the residents supposed to take?
You shouldn't, and I wish you came here earlier, but what I would suggest is, well, we're certainly going to look into that, and I would also suggest the next police commission meeting that has oversight over the, go tell them this, please. I will tell them, too. I will tell it to the...
Find out what this meeting is.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, that's not good to hear. And, you know, like I say, we haven't, that was just a thought. We weren't, we haven't gone that far yet. No. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, we all did. Yeah, we all did.
Right. Right. Yeah, and I'm all for the exercise and fresh air. It's part of what Berlin, it makes it so quaint and beautiful. But we have to look at the safety factor of our kids. I guarantee you, students will be up there, and they will be partying up there and saying, who's going to come up here and see us? They're not going to.
I'm disturbed that you said the bus doesn't go all the way to...
No, it does not. When my children were in school, I had to fight for a bus to come to my home.
Yeah.
Now the buses stop on Linden, on the bottom, and kids are walking up by themselves. There's no sidewalks. Some of those kids are by themselves.
Yeah.
Some of them are female.
Yeah, well...
Live right next to me. So if she's walking up the street from her bus stop, it's quite a far distance.
It's a long road there, yeah.
I'm concerned about her safety and any other kids who walk up the street.
I mean, anybody on Board of Ed, but, no. I mean, we've had concerns about the bus routes, too, about things like that. You know, that's, again, a Board of Ed decision, but...
Right, I understand that.
Go, you know...
When my children were going to school, they were different schools at the same time. I had a high school bus, a middle school bus, an elementary school bus. I cannot be in three places at once and go to work in the morning. So I had to fight tooth and nail to get a bus. And then later on, they just changed it right back to Linden and Orchard.
Yeah, they've changed it with a lot of the routes, yeah.
I understand.
I say it's good or bad, it's different, you know, for whatever reason.
Safety is a factor. My, my main purpose in coming up tonight is to express my sincere concern that something's going to happen.
Well, we got to address that.
It's very remote, it's very dark up there, and nobody comes in an ample amount of time. And are we expected as citizens of Linden and Summit Wood Drive to call every two minutes?
Yeah.
Four-by-fours, kids, safety. It's going to become a drinking and drug spot, I guarantee you.
Yeah, probably already has. I don't see any, yeah...
My first name is Carmel, C-A-R.
Is that Lieutenant Jobes there?
I-N-A, middle initial N, last name Cooper, C-O-O-P-E-R. Two-hundred-and-twenty-two Summit Wood Drive.
Right, yeah. We have a lieutenant from the PD on there. Maybe he could, since he heard this, maybe just...
I took...
Lieutenant, yeah, if he, yes, we got you.
I took some notes as she was speaking. I didn't catch her address. I'll look into it tomorrow.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-two Summit Wood Drive.
I'll look into that tomorrow about the response times and put something out to patrol about making more checks in that area.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Okay.
So is it my understanding, before I leave, and I'm sorry to take so much time, I'm very passionate about safety and kids. I'm a mother of three, I have five grandchildren, I want to enjoy my property that I've worked hard my whole life, and I want to enjoy it and feel peaceful and safe along with my neighbors. So is it my understanding that you do not, you have not yet made a decision regarding as to where the parking lot is going to be located?
No, I think, we've all had concerns, yeah. It's not a lot. We said maybe a couple spots. Yeah. Yeah.
It goes around.
To have it not on your front lawn. Because I don't know where you are on Summit Wood.
And halfway up before the power lines.
So it wouldn't be anywhere near where your property would be, and it wouldn't be in front of other people's homes. And like I said, it was not a full parking lot that they were talking about doing. So I just texted Woody, I don't know if he's around.
And that was in conjunction with, you know, folks are here from the land trust to just figure out how to get access. For folks, you know, with that trail, with the piece of...
If we already have that land and that designation on Orchard, and we have that designation already pre-existing on Chamberlain Highway. It's my understanding, we own a parcel of that land that used to be Stanley's farm. Why can't, and all those areas connect? Why can't we use those existing facilities? And maybe make them bigger if you need to? Repave them, or re-rock them, or to expand? And at least you have visual traffic of cars going through there, police officers, residents. And if they see something that looks off, you're going to get a quicker response versus buried up in the woods at the top of Summit Wood Drive.
Yeah, and...
You're not going to see what's going on.
No, I agree, I've been up there, I know. But, I mean, that's, and that's other play. We've had this same issue and other access to trails in town with several, several of them.
Right. And emergencies. If there's a fire up there like there was over elevation.
Yes.
I don't want to see a disaster like that. Any firefighter, anybody losing their lives, or, you know, becoming disabled or anything like that. And I'm mainly concerned about the kids saying, hey, we've got a great party spot. Meet me Friday night before the game or after the game on Summit Wood.
Yeah. No, we...
I used to congregate there when my kids were in high school.
Right, right.
One time I called, there were fifty cars, there were fifty cars in front of my house. I had to convince the police officer to come out. He thought I was seeing a mirage. I said, there's fifty vehicles in front of my house parked on both sides. And the kids are, you know, all pulling their beer out.
Yeah. Have they put the cement barriers up there?
They have cement barriers.
I thought, I thought there were some.
They break through. They move, they put a whole bunch of brush, and then they, they push the brush back, and then they have trails through there.
They are persistent, yes.
They are very persistent.
Yeah, I know, we know.
There's a will, there's a way, and they're going to...
Yeah, no, we get it. Well, you know, it's good that you, which is the purpose of this, you know, meeting, and certainly the audience of citizens, to come and tell us this stuff, because otherwise, you know, we don't hear it, and I'm glad Lieutenant Jobes heard it, and so, but, yeah, I don't, I don't think we were, any of us were real keen on up there anyway, for that reason.
Right.
So we were just...
The police have better things to do with their time than going up top of Summit Wood and babysit on a Friday night, Saturday night.
Well, they're there anyway. They, I think, sounds like to me, from what you're saying, just with my background in law enforcement, yes, they have to, they're going to have to patrol that more often. That, no doubt, no doubt about it, if what you're saying is happening on a routine basis.
But I think safety would be a better factor if it was on Orchard.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
And if that Stanley property can be converted, because those are high-traffic areas, and I think less would be going on in that area. So I appreciate your time, everyone.
Appreciate you speaking to us, yes, thank you.
I sincerely am worried about this, so I hope the council makes the right decision and places it elsewhere.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, sir. One last, one, I think, and we'll have to check online, too. Everybody's raising their hands. Well, welcome.
Thank you for the time to speak.
Sure.
Totally impromptu, Doug Sanders, three-three-six Summit Wood. So what I want to do is kind of clarify from my perspective, I'm the last house up there.
Okay.
For years, I helped maintain the trail. I, in fact, somebody came up and I had a good conversation with them as I was walking my dog the other day. And I clarified what my, what my personal position is. I'm a hiker, I like going up there, I walk my dog, the whole bit. I love to see the hikers come up through there. So I want to make sure we differentiate between hikers and parking, and that's very important. So for the land trust and everything, the hiking. Also, we had a meeting, a couple of us, had a meeting a month and a half ago with Maureen, talking about some of the issues that are going up there. And we suggested, like some of the other parks, they have a gate, so you can still have fire access. But as you say, there are the big concrete blocks on most of the cul-de-sac, but there's a gravel road that goes all the way down to the old power generating station, all the way down there. You can't keep that unless you bring up the heavy equipment up there. The town goes up there periodically to clear out sofas, burned-out cars, they all get up there. So I just want to clarify, and I see some familiar faces up here I've had conversations with already. So, and the comment, the feedback I got when I stated my position was, I'm glad to hear that, when I was regarding the hiking versus the parking situation. So I just want to clearly delineate the two different positions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the info. Okay, so, anyone else here? Okay, one more, yes, okay. Come on down, yes.
My name is Betsy Piskorsky. I'm on two-forty-nine Wine Sap Road, right next to the Bicentennial Park. So whatever you've been talking about, about the traffic, about kids coming down, which by the way, they don't party down. The police have been great about responding when I call.
Good.
But yes, it is a problem when you put any kind of a parking area into a residential area. You have traffic all the time down there. They parked now, the police years ago, but no parking signs in front of our houses, which has been a help. But we still have them coming down. They do come down at night, not as much as they used to, but yes, it is a definite problem. If I had my way, they would take that out, that entrance out completely, because there are other entrances that do not impact any houses that go through Bicentennial Park, and that's all I wanted to say. So whatever your problems you have at Summit Wood, you have my sympathy, because it is a problem.
While you're here, since we moved the dog park better? Since we moved the dog, is it any, well, the one we moved out of there? No, the one that, are they still, they're still there?
God, I, I do Pistol Creek, I love Pistol Creek walking, but there's never dogs there, never. And there's a leash law, by the way.
Are they off-leash in Bicentennial?
Oh, all the time. Come take a walk down there. Oh, God, yeah, always law.
Have you called animal control?
I will not get into that.
Well, that's the answer, and that's not a good answer.
They go up and control it, but they don't.
That's not a good answer.
No, it's not.
All right, well, I'm glad you told us that, Betsy. Thank you, appreciate that. We don't know sometimes, unfortunately. Anyone else? All right, online, any hands raised? Nothing? Yes, yes, of course. A lot was said tonight, a lot of different things, all good to hear.
I want to make this short and sweet. As a resident of High Road, the Nelson Augustus Moore home is near and dear to my heart. Actually, is probably one of the reasons why we moved to Berlin thirty-five years ago when we came down High Road, and there was none of that newer development on the left, and the horses were still there out in the fields. And if I walked by that place once, I walked by it a thousand times. It's a beautiful area. I, too, was at the Historical Society event last Saturday, along with the mayor. And we do need to preserve, try to preserve in some way or shape or form, our heritage here in this community. And it really is important for us to do things like this, because if we tear these places down and put new homes up, there's nothing that we can pass on to any of our young. I've been a member of the Berlin Land Trust, probably as close to or as long as the Berlin Historical Society, many decades now. You both do wonderful work, and I thank you for everything that you do, and I will certainly give my full support of this project. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Donna. Yeah, we have, obviously, we have this discussion on our agenda, but, you know, likewise for me, I grew up in Kensington, there on Heather Lane, and, yeah, that area's always been a beautiful area, many friends and relatives rode horses there, and, yeah, I think there's no question probably where most of us are going with this, I'm sure all of us. But we have that on the agenda, so we'll wait, wait a little bit till we get there. We got to get some other stuff done, but...
Runs by my house every time.
Yes, yeah. I see her on my walk still. I see you out there, yes. I think you're running faster than me, which, yeah, that's great. I got to step it up a little, step up the game. But, so appreciate all the comments, everything, this is what this is for. I love it, quite frankly. I love it you come and tell us stuff, because we want that. That's how we know, that's why we have council meetings twice, twice, twice a month, so we, and that's why we have the audience of citizens. And like I said before, I think I said it at the forum, I'm disappointed, you know, and I don't want to pick on them, but I'm going to have to. I'm disappointed that I've let you folks speak, you know, and to the detriment of getting our, rest of our agenda done, but that's okay, that's what we volunteer for. The Board of Ed, when we went the other night, I went to it, I've gone to it several times, but with the three-minute time for people, I just, that's so bad, with a clock right in your face, three minutes ticking down as soon as you stand up, and I would never do that to folks, and you see that tonight. And I've never done that in the ten years I've been here, but, so, you know, we need to let our residents speak like you do, and you will in the future, because otherwise, you all need a voice, and this is the place to voice it, here, certainly at the town budget meeting, all the different meetings we have in town, all the different boards and commissions. You know, a lot of, you know, some of this is on planning and zoning a little bit. Go speak to them, you know, there's some of it on other boards, inland, you know, different conservation commission, different, different boards and commissions. And many, many times, nobody goes to those meetings, so, you know, you should go, you should look it up, the agenda's online, we send out an extra email to advise people, and if it affects your property or the town in any way that you want to enjoy a different space, or whatever issue, Public Building Commission, all the boards and commissions, go and let them know, because, you know, a lot of times, a lot of things we do here, before we make a decision, we send it to Public Building. It has to go to Conservation, it has to go to Planning and Zoning. So they're first up with a lot of these issues, so it's good to get the information to them before it even gets to us, you know? And they make their decisions under their particular regulations, and then, you know, it may get to us, and we'll make some, you know, final decisions on different projects or whatever's going on. Police Commission, too. Don't forget the Police Commission. You know, they're the ones that oversee the Police Department, you know? So if you have issues, anything to tell them, good and bad, they're a great Police Department, you know, we work hard, they work hard to keep the town safe, and they do a great job. But if there's things that are not working right, you got to go tell them, too. But if there's things that are not working right, you got to go tell them, too. And we do, we'll pass it along. We do all the time, from what we hear here, of course. All the councilors here will pass it to different folks. Obviously, the town manager's here, he'll pass it to whatever. We're here in the meeting. But it's good. It's what it's about. It's about coming and talking to your elected officials, as you should. So we appreciate you being here. And with that, we will move on. We have some other stuff on the agenda, and appreciate it. So, real quick, Mayor's update, I just wanted to mention, we mentioned it a couple of times. Our Worthington Meeting House, 250th anniversary was Saturday. You know, and it's hard to believe that that was built in 1774. It's amazing it's still there. And, you know, we have tried to spend some time on it, and we'll spend more time in funding in the future. We had some discussions on, obviously, a lot of work needs to be done there, but we had a proclamation that I read at it. And, you know, it just has quite the history. I'm not going to read the whole proclamation, but we really have to work on preserving that, along with the Historical Society, and keep that going. That's a great piece of history in town, and, you know, right up the street, too. It's a private home now, but as you probably know, and we heard a lot of great history tonight about a lot of stuff. It was a great history lesson tonight, I guess. But, you know, George Washington, right, came, came there after, you know, I think he was president by then. And there was a tavern, I think, further up on Worthington Ridge. It's a house now. He did stop there. So we had that discussion, too. So anyway, it's a great, great history in Berlin. The sad part is a lot of us don't know it. I mean, I grew up in Berlin, been here most of my life. I didn't know a lot of stuff till you start getting out there, and certainly go to the, you know, the museum at Percival there, the old library. Go there and see the amazing history of Berlin. So just wanted to mention that. That was a great event. So with that, we're getting, we're moving on with our agenda here. Yes. Oh, yes. Yeah, that's right. I did want to mention that. That's, that's right. And thank you for the reminder. Today was the unfortunate, you know, it's the anniversary, not a good anniversary, of the fire, right? Of the Hawthorne Fire was today, and I think, it's hard to believe a year has gone by. And, you know, tomorrow would be the day that unfortunately, Mr. Sharkovich, the firefighter from Weathersfield, who came to help us, you know, died up there on the mountain, which is the very thing that, you know, we, the first night there, when I was talking to Jimmy Simons, that was the first thing. I mean, obviously, to stop the fire, protect their citizens, protect their property, but please, don't let anybody get hurt. And the second day, the worst thing happened, which is quite the tragedy. And, you know, all the, all the firemen from around the state, I think, if I remember correctly, 66 departments, something like that, federal and state partners, National Guard, I mean, it took everybody to keep the rest of the town safe. Especially Silver Ridge, that was the closest that they got to any other, you know, developed property. But it was a year ago, so, you know, we're thankful we put it out without any other issues. But unfortunately, the worst did occur, so just remember Mr. Sharkovich and his family for what sacrifice he made, unfortunately, that, that day. So just never, never forget about those things, and how our fire department and everybody, you know, the whole country, right? We had helicopters from, I think, Maine and New Hampshire and everywhere come and help put that fire out. So it was quite the event, and we hope not to see that anytime soon again. So anyway, just so we remember that. All right, on to our consent agenda, if we could. We have read this, as we get this ahead of time. There are eight items. I'm not going to read them all through. We've read them, and we'll go ahead and take a motion, Charlie.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Right, so moved. All right. Ryan, on to our agenda.
All right, good evening, everyone. So, under new business, Agenda Item 1 this evening is a, a sort of change of plans for the meantime. You may recall that the Town Council had approved back in January of 2024 to use LoCIP funding for the bridge project at Timberland Golf Course. And so Mayor Mark and myself participated in a meeting with various members of the Golf Commission, as well as our Director of Golf and, and other members at Timberland a couple of weeks ago. And one of the things that was discussed were these, were these bridges. And due to some of the wetland issues there, the project...
I think you're on the wrong...
You're on the wrong item. Item one is the...
Oh, the turnpike, yeah.
Turnpike Motors.
I have the old agenda, that's why.
Oh, Town Manager.
Hey, this agenda was changing as of Friday morning.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
I'm sorry.
We got it. We got it.
Let me get to the, let me get to the right agenda.
Yeah.
All right, so...
A lot of changes, a lot of changes.
As I was talking about, Turnpike Motors, then, are Engine Number 10, which had been taken in for repairs. There were some rust issues. And then upon further evaluation, there was additional rust that was evaluated. And so because of that, there's additional funding. Mr. Simons, do you want to, Jim is here, if there's anything to add on that.
Mr. Jim, tell us about this poor fire piece of apparatus here. What...
I feel bad. So, I'm in, Engine Number 10. We allocated money, capital, we went out and got us...
Speak up a little bit more, Jim, please.
Sure. I decided that, presented to you that taking it to Turnpike Motors was our best option. I still believe it's our best option.
Okay.
As they began to take it apart and cut the old rust out, hidden underneath the body or hidden within the body, there was more damage that needs to be repaired. It's not unusual when you're doing rust and rock repair on a vehicle, and you want to get it all out of there, much like a cancer, and we call it in the automotive field, that it's cancer of the car. You got to remove all the bad, put all new parts in. So they reevaluated it. It came back $12,500 change. Additional work needs to be done. I am here asking you to reapprove the amount of repair to Turnpike Motors to the new, new dollar figure of $46,151.95. No transfer funds or anything else.
Just the additional, yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, that's fine. I mean, we appreciate you, you know, working on this piece of apparatus. So, you know, it's savable, obviously, in your eyes. I know it is. That's when you came to us, and that's a good thing, so we're...
The one's only a million and a half.
Yeah, well, yeah, looking at the million and a half price tag, we appreciate that. This is feasible, and we can...
There's a million dollars right now.
Yes.
Were to just replace the body, the back half of the body.
Yeah, yeah.
A bare body, or body in white, as it's called.
Yeah.
It's $200,000. It'd have to be shipped here, painted, outfitted, the whole nine yards. We'd be, we'd be at a quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah.
You know, to spend $55,000 when the project's over, I think we'll...
And we'll get a bunch of...
We'll get a bunch of...
We will. Okay, yeah. That's great. Yeah, good. Any questions, folks? We good? All right, we're good. All right, so we'll go ahead and take a motion, Charlie.
Move to waive the town's purchasing requirements and approve Turnpike Motors of Newington, Connecticut to repair MP Number 0335, Engine Number 10's rust, as outlined in the quote, 074497 and 054012, for an amount not to exceed $46,151.95, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Right, so moved. Thank you. Thanks, Jim. Dennis, now you show up. Dennis, come on. No, yes, yes, they do, and we didn't get to the agenda, your agenda item yet, so you're good. Yeah, your folks did great. Go ahead. Sorry, Ryan.
All right. So, back to Timberland Golf.
Here we go. All right, we're on track now.
What happened was the, the bridge project that we talked about previously, we had allocated funding through LoCIP funds, with grant funds. And due to the length of time, LoCIP, the program, has changed the way that they provide towns with the grant funds. And so this project had been allocated with, under the previous way that they did this. And because this is taking so long, the state has been on the town to utilize these, these old LoCIP funds. And, and so because of that, we felt that it was a good idea to look for other funding mechanisms for the bridge project. We actually have bond authorization for the bridge that we've done, and that's been approved already. And so we had previously, you may recall, Representative Beach had helped us provide a package to the State Bond Commission to consider funding the parking area at Sage Park. And unfortunately, we were unsuccessful with that this past legislative session. And so the thought was to reposition the funding, that LoCIP funding, to something more immediate, and that would be the Sage, or parking lot, that we could do now. And so, and utilize that bond authorization for Timberland. So we can still do both, but we can at least get Sage Park done in the more immediate future. And so Mike Ahern is on as well. If Mike has anything to add on this.
Yes, I do. Part, part of the delay, too, on the Timberland Bridges was that the Golf Commission started focusing on the bunker project, which is now underway. So that, they kind of focused on that. And the other consideration was that the, and hopefully you guys can see me and hear me, because I'm having bandwidth problems. Are we good?
Yeah, we're good. Yeah.
Yeah. The, the channel that runs through the golf course is in a regulatory floodway. So you'd have to get Army Corps, deep, and the inland wetlands approvals through before you could even start putting a bid package together, you know, as far as going to, for construction. So that alone, Army Corps, in my experience, is, it depends on who you get, but typically, it's not a short-term, two- or three-month turnaround. It's usually pretty extended, because you're dealing with the federal government. So that's just part of it. And as part of this, of the package, I sent you the map that shows Sage Park, the lot, and then a lot of the areas that Woody and I talked about, he added on, like going up to the baseball field and around the maintenance building. And I would also like to do Surana Boulevard coming in, the entry road, because that has block cracking. It's not as bad, in as bad condition as the parking lot, but it's getting reflective cracking coming up, because before it was just on like an overlay. This is full depth. Grind it all up, regrade it. It's a whole, it's like a brand-new road, brand-new parking lot. So that's the approach, and all this would be done with our state bid contractors. So we wouldn't have to go out to bid. We would just use the DAS contracts for both striping and paving. So that's my two cents.
Thanks, Mike. Folks, questions? Questions? Good? Okay. Yes, of course.
The Bond Committee offer is able to, because they haven't had the council meetings.
Okay.
Been pushed out, so I haven't gotten the official, no, 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 this isn't happening. We can rework things, correct?
Well, I was under pressure.
I have not, no, because unless you got something, I haven't seen anything at my end. It's still, it's not a dead issue.
Mike, Mike, can you hear though?
Mike, can you hear that question, Counselor Beach?
I think I picked up most of it. The fact is, maybe this, I'll go for the next year's round from the Bond Commission. Is that, is that the...
I get the, the council meetings have been pushed out. We haven't had them.
Oh.
And I could certainly have my office circle back, but I did send a letter out about a month ago, asking. And according to my ranking, things have been pushed out, and they have not, just haven't come up yet. You know, there's, there's money issues. So I was just curious if those funds do become available. Since we're doing this, how does that work? Does it, you know, how do we handle that? We could talk offline about this. I mean, I just don't know if it's a dead issue yet, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I thought it was a dead issue.
Did you get a, did you get a letter?
No, no.
I haven't either.
Yeah, and I, and maybe Kevin or someone, Ryan knows the more than... But I just was understanding that, yeah, this was, that was a fork in the road. Let's go for the LoCIP versus the state bond money. But I'm probably wrong.
Unless you got something at your end.
I haven't received anything official, but working with the Bond Commission in the past, typically, things have to stay in limbo.
They do, which is unfortunate. I mean, we have things that were approved up there that are still hanging and not been, you know... All right, I will, I'm going to have to do some checking. That's all. Again, like I said, the meeting that was supposed to happen in August didn't happen. The meeting that was supposed to happen in September did not happen. We're at the end of October. I haven't heard anything yet. And I have inquired. I mean...
Kevin's on. I just don't know if, as far as the old LoCIP funding goes, which we would use...
And maybe we have to use that, since they're after us to use that.
That was the thought.
Okay.
But another thought could be if the Bond Commission were to award us the funding. We did give them, submitted two proposals.
Two proposals, so we will be able to perhaps fund the other project that we talking about doing.
There may be some flexibility.
Okay.
The Bond Commission is something so that we could look at. The thought was to get this...
No, I agree. I agree. It needs to get done, certainly.
But we don't want to turn down potential.
No, but I just, like I said, did you guys get a letter? Because I did not. Haven't heard anything, and I know that the two out of the past three meetings have been pushed out, so.
The last meeting was June.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was just when, this would have never been pulled up in June, you know. Okay, thank you.
So...
So...
Where does that...
For...
You do it, right? Yeah, where we, yeah. Okay. Yeah, okay. Okay. All right, thanks, Donna. Okay, so we'll go ahead and get to the two motions.
Move to rescind authorization for the Town Manager to apply for a State of Connecticut LoCIP grant approved by the Town Council at their January 9, 2024 special meeting.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Right, so moved. Second motion.
Move to authorize the Town Manager to apply for a State of Connecticut LoCIP grant for $327,563.68 for renovations to Sage Park Parking Lot and Sunart, Surana Drive, and appropriate the funds to the LoCIP Sage Park Parking Lot Project Account pending OPM approval.
Thank you. Second? Thank you, Donna. Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you all. One thing we can do is we can hold off on, on actual application until maybe, if you could...
I did inquire twice, but I certainly, they just haven't had the meeting unless they do something this week.
We can wait until the next Bond Commission meeting. Maybe we do that, and then afterwards. All right. The next item this evening is, is a bit of good news. You may recall, the town had received a connectivity grant to put additional sidewalks in back in 2023. That grant was for $780,000. And I'm pleased to report that when we went out to bid for the construction of the sidewalks, the, the project came in under, under what we had anticipated.
That's right.
And so there's some additional funding available, and DOT has indicated that we would be able to add scope and additional work to the project. I'll, I'll turn it over to Mike to, to go over the details with it, but some good news on sidewalks.
Yeah, that's great.
Yes, we have more money than scope, and the bidder came in, we had nine bids that came in. And again, this was for segments, and I included a map, you know, in your packages that shows the five segments. They're on Norton, let's see here. Kensington Road, Four Rod Road, Norton Road, Percival Avenue, and Robbins Road. And again, these are connecting other pieces of sidewalk that were there. These are gaps. So that's why we got the connectivity funding. Out of the nine bids, the low bid was $477,485. It was a little bit lower than everyone else by a bit. So what we did was we did a little bit more checking and due diligence on this just to make sure there weren't any unit costs that were sort of like lost leaders, and also checked with some references. They actually did a million dollars' worth of work last season with West Hartford, who would hire them again. So we feel comfortable, and the engineer also has a letter of recommendation for this, this contractor, Detour Construction, out of Lowell, Mass. So we right now have a bid of $477,500. We probably have $900,000 worth of available funding. So DOT, and they did this before, but we had a reverse situation where we didn't have enough money, and they let us adjust the scope downward, and kind of like pull a few pieces in. So they, they seem to be pretty, you know, as far as flexible. And I found this before with, with these grants. So we're hoping is we can put the construction, engineering, and inspection into the job, and then throw some segments on top of that with your permission after we get through with, or award the contract, and we can do this as a change order with DOT's approval. So that, basically, the idea is right now, let's get the base contract awarded, and then deal with DOT, add some segments, and then come back to you with the concrete plan.
Okay, thanks, Mike. I, I just was curious, and I know you said you got a good reference, which is a good thing, because I mean, it is quite the spread between even between one and two. uh, was curious and I know you said you got a good reference, which is a good thing because I mean, I, it is quite the spread between even between one and two. Um, and certainly if you go down a list, it's almost double down the list, but, um, but you're, so you're confident with these folks, right, at that price?
Well, I had a phone call with him because I was, I wanted to talk to him in person. And he said, I said, you know, what's, I said, are you number one, are you comfortable with your, your bid? You wanted withdrawal? He goes, no, absolutely not. Um, and he basically said he's looking for work. He, he has availability. And the way this job is running, not, not much, if anything, will get done before the winter. So this is backlogging for the spring work. So he's actually just going to be sort of creating his backlog for two thousand twenty six with this job. That's his, that's going to be, you know, sort of on his list. So that's, that's the impression I got. He said, no, he goes, they just, they just bid higher than me and I'm, I'm comfortable with my numbers. So that's, um, that's the take.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. No, I know you do your due diligence. I know. I, I just, when you see, you know, prices that are, you know, fairly different, you know, quite a bit different down the list. You just want to make sure, you know, you never know. But no, I appreciate your, your homework on it. And yeah, I mean, we're happy that it's less, of course. And obviously they're reliable, so that's good. Folks, any other questions? We good? Okay. Go ahead and, uh, the motion, Charlie.
Move to award the connectivity funded sidewalk project number two zero two six dash two with segments on Four Rod Road, Kensington Road, Norton Road, Percival Avenue and Robbins Road. Low bidder detour construction of Lowell, Mass. In the amount of four hundred seventy seven thousand four hundred and eighty five dollars. And to authorize the town manager, went into change orders not to exceed forty seven thousand seven hundred and eight, forty eight dollars. And to sign related documents, the after corporate council review, including a project authorization letter as required by the Connecticut Department of Transportation of the base contract.
Take your second. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the, uh, council? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Right, so moved. Thanks, Mike, again. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Our next item is, this was a, speaking of Bond Commission, the, the town of Berlin had received a grant from the state Bond Commission back, I believe it was twenty seventeen, uh, for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to explore the, the possibility of a senior center, community center, which, which we heard about earlier this evening as well. And so that grant was set to expire at the end of this calendar year. Uh, we reached out to the state, uh, to seek an extension on that and they were kind enough to grant us a four-year extension of that. So we have this grant. There's over five hundred thousand dollars worth of funding left in it and we now have that until the end of twenty twenty nine.
Nice.
Um, so more good news on that was that we, we explained to them the conversations that the town has engaged in with the why. Uh, and we've asked if the funds would potentially be used as a pass through to the why so that they could conduct a feasibility study on the property. And they said, absolutely, as long as it fits in the criteria of what the bond authorization said, we can use those funds. So I did reach out to Don Rittman with, with the YMCA, uh, just, and I just received an email, email back from him yesterday stating that they want to have another meeting. You may recall that the town had sent them all of the site evaluation work that we had done over the summer. So it does appear that we have a renewed vigor to, to get this ball rolling and to get some, some answers. And so uh, progress is being made on, on the evaluation of this property. And, uh, it's encouraging, but we do need town council's approval to authorize the grant extension to, uh, the end of twenty twenty nine. And so that's the motion before you today.
All right. What do you think, folks? Good? Questions, comments?
Nope.
Absolutely good.
Just confused because my motion talks about the Department of Mental Health.
Oh, yes, it does. You're right about that. It, it does. Is that where it came from? No, it couldn't have.
It should have been.
Did it come from there?
It is. It is. That's who manages our grant.
Ah.
So when.
Okay. Oh, probably because of that.
You get approval from the state bond commission, they then send it to a state agency to oversee the grant.
Yeah.
So in this case, it was.
Yeah, that's an interesting choice. Yeah. Yeah. Interesting choice. Yes.
Only Berlin.
That is correct. It's a good question, though.
I don't remember saying that on there before.
Your whole explanation never mentioned the mental health component. So I was confused.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I move to authorize the execution by the town manager of an extension to the Connecticut Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services Grant for community center planning.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this?
Twenty nine.
Twenty nine.
Number thirty first, twenty, uh, twenty.
Just declare, at this point, just going for the extension, not use of it or anything.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood correctly. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and, you know, the, 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 the funds we used out of this for the, um, the, you know, the borings on the site and the site study is, of course, should, you know, things change and we decide to build, you know, an indoor pool there on the town side, that's all usable by us, of course, too. You know, whatever comes out of this grant is, you know, we can use it, the Y can share it. I mean, it's, uh, you know, it, it, it would be a little bit of a public-private partnership, which, which is not a bad thing today. Um, but, uh, you know, if that doesn't work, um, we always have the other option of coming back to the town, which is always still on the table. So that's where we're at. It's just another option to look at before we make a final decision. So anyone else on this? If not, motioned on the floor. Uh, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right, so move.
All right. Thank you for that. The next item is another authorization to extend a grant. This is a steep award, a small town economic assistance program award that the town received back, uh, I want to say twenty twenty one. It's been a little bit and this grant is for, um, thirty Steel Park Boulevard. And this is the home to, it's going to be a park once we complete the subsurface detention system that's being installed right now. We're hauling dirt away, uh, um, and that's been ongoing. But this grant was set to expire on December eighth and so we of, of this year of twenty twenty five. And so we received a two-year extension to December eighth, twenty twenty seven. So this would authorize me to be able to sign that.
There's a steep grant here.
Move to authorize the execution by the town manager of an extension to a steep grant through the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development for the Steel Boulevard Park Project.
Thank you second on that. Thank you. Uh, any other comments or questions on this? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right, so moved.
All right. We'll move to agenda item number six. Thank you all. And this is a topic that we've heard quite a bit about uh, under, uh, under public comment earlier. And this is the, a discussion of the efforts to preserve the Augustus Moore Homestead. And I, I want to really, uh, thank the Berlin Land Trust and the Trust for Public Land. This has been going on for, uh, quite some time. They've put a lot of work into this and it, it's a beautiful piece of property. Uh, and I, I know we've talked about it already. I'm going to invite, I, I know we have Honor Lawler here from the Trust for Public Land. Yes. I don't know if Honor, if you, uh, Maureen, do you want to start and then invite Honor up? How do you want to do it, Maureen?
Well, I was actually going to say, good evening, everyone to start with, but I was.
I'm Maureen. How are you?
I'm okay. Thank you. Um, I was just gonna, I gave, had a little spiel and I think all the, you've heard his background on the property already takes away everything I was going to say. Um, and I would just like to introduce Honor, who has a small presentation to tell you a little bit about the land. It is a non, um, a non-action item. This is informational. So you can hear about the efforts going in, um, because you might see something on this in the future that we do have to ask for actions on. And, um, uh, she has a slide deck that she's going to try to, um, a PowerPoint presentation. If she can't share it, I have it ready to share as she goes through her um, presentation. Honor Lawler from the, um, Trust for Public Land.
Thank you, Maureen. Uh, Maureen, would you be able to share your, uh?
There, I have it pulled up already.
Hey, why don't we do that? That'll make it easy. And then, do you want to make?
Thank you, Maureen. And thank you, everyone, for having me. I know you have a lot of important town issues to discuss and we really appreciate the opportunity to come talk to you and the citizens as well. So I, um, my name is Honor Lawler. I'm a project manager with the Trust for Public Land. Um, I spend the first few slides just giving you guys all an overview of what is the Trust for Public Land. Um, we, you can go to the first slide, Maureen. Uh, you can either run the show or, yeah, that's fine. Um, so Trust for Public Land is a national conservation organization. Um, we protect land across the country and, and create parks. And we do that to ensure healthy, livable communities for generations to come. So Trust for Public Land as an organization is not your typical land trust in that we don't hold land. We're not a land holding organization. What we do is we come into communities when we're invited and we help local land trusts, municipalities, state and federal government acquire their, the land that they desire to protect. Um, or create the parks that they desire to create. And so we partner with municipalities and land trusts to help them do that. And we do that in doing that, we take away a lot of the risk, a lot of the financing that communities and land trusts are often burdened with when it comes to acquiring land. Um, land is not cheap in Connecticut. We know that. And so Trust for Public Land is really the sort of the organization that has the deep transactional knowledge of doing these acquisitions. We negotiate with, you can go to the next slide, Maureen. Sorry, I'm jumping ahead a little bit. Um, we, we do this. I'll go back to the mission. We do this because we believe our work makes healthier, more resilient and more equitable communities. Next slide. Um, this is just like stats. We've protected over fifty five hundred places across the country. We've leveraged a hundred and ten billion through, um, that's state, federal referendums, local referendums, um, and over, I think that number should be like four and a half million acres now, but this is, I took an old slide deck. So, next slide. Um, yep, you can jump there.
I'm having trouble getting the next slide to go.
That's okay. Oh.
There we go.
So why we do this, we believe that open space is important for all communities for a myriad of reasons. Um, all the way from the economic reasons of enhancing property values all the way down to, you know, the bugs and birds and things that use the places that we recreate and everything in between. I just, um, I don't want to take too much of the time. These, I'm happy to share these slides, but these are sort of all the reasons, the breadth of what, what we do and why we do it. Next slide. Um, and so what we do is we negotiate with the landowner, um, and we do that in private and we do that confidentially. And we secure a contract with the landowner that allows us to purchase the property. We put together the terms, the timing, the price. We are a nonprofit and so we are beholden to the standards of the IRS as an accredited land trust. The Land Trust Alliance um, accredits us and we are, so we have ethical and, um, we have ethical standards that we have to abide by and legal standards that we have to abide by. We do not pay more than fair market value. Um, we do appraisals to the standards that the state and federal government expects and we, so we do our due diligence. We do things right, um, to make sure that these deals are, um, all above board and we can help communities achieve their open space needs. A lot of the, us doing this takes away that burden, that, that uncertainty, the timelines, the bureaucracy that often get bogged down when a state or federal or even um, local government organization tries to put the deal together. It's, it can be tricky to put these things together in public, like negotiating your, the sale of your home in public is not a, not something anyone wants to do. And so we take that risk away and we do it ourselves. At closing, we convey the land to our trusted partner. In the course of that timeframe, we've put together the money. We've, um, done the due diligence, environmental appraisal, survey, all the things that we need to do in order to transact. Next slide. Um, I think you guys heard enough about the history of the Moore Homestead. I'm not going to bu, bore you with that, but I, you can jump through these slides pretty quickly, Maureen, if you don't mind. These are just like a couple samples because no one was up here showing you his paintings and, and these are a few of them that are lovely. Um, several of them are from his home, you know, right on his property all the way to, this one's the Adirondacks in Lake George where um, he, he spent his summers commissioning paintings. Um, and last one, I think that's the farm itself, um, an old view of the farm. Uh, next slide. And, and so one of the things that drew us to help the Berlin Land Trust, I, I was presenting, um, sort of the anatomy of a land transaction at a conference. And I think Rich Gagliardi was there and he approached me and he said, hey, you know, we've got this really beautiful property. And when he started telling me about it, I was like, that, that is just what we did at Weir Farm. Um, we purchased the land and I think it was like eighteen different transactions. So this is like a piece of cake. Uh, eighteen different transactions and, and assembled the farm back together because back, Jalden Weir, his farm had passed down to his kids and their kids and it had been sold off to, you know, provide funding for the families as they're, as the, they were split and, um, and it was, it was a long process. But now it is a beautiful national historic site. I encourage all of you to, you are interested, to go on to the Weir Farm Historic Site website. They have a, a really short five-minute video that just talks about how, how important it is to have these connections to art with our landscape. And I think it's a really moving and inspiring video that shows what can be done when we connect, you know, our past and the history of these places to our current generations that where, you know, arts are something that are, I think we can all agree underfunded and underappreciated these days. Maybe not all, I, I would say that. I mean, exposure to the art is something that has been replaced with sports and that's wonderful in its own right, but arts are so important and, and having places there that people can visit that connect them to the history and art and opportunities to explore their creative side is something that is just in, in low supply. Um, and so I see this and, you know, I'm not the decider of what happens at this house or this farm. We protect the land. That's what Trust for Public Land does. We help communities envision what is possible on these places. And, but we are not the dictators of what happens there. It is a community decision. And so it is the Berlin Land Trust and the residents that get to say, hey, we're going to have, you know, an artist in residency or we're going to bring back a farmer's market. We're going to have community gardens and all of this happens publicly and, you know, in, in the, in the sphere of community coordination. And so I put a couple examples here. It's kind of hard to read for folks, but you know, there are recreation opportunities. There's a connection to the arts. There's a connection to history and the nature, natural world. Um, and all of those things are worth exploring if nothing else. Uh, next slide. Um, here is sort of the, the quick fast facts. We're under contract. We have to close by the end of the year, early twenty twenty six. Um, that's a really tight timeframe. We did that because as, as some of you might know, um, the land across the street was developed. There was a great deal of interest in developing this property too. Trust for Public Land supports land conservation. We also understand that there's a need for housing in communities. Um, but this opportunity arose and we thought with the Berlin Land Trust and we heard from enough people that this was an important place to protect. And so, um, we secured an option. The purchase price is one point seven million. That is also the appraised fair market value. Um, we've secured a state grant in partnership with the Berlin Land Trust to, on, for eight hundred and twenty two thousand. Um, they are able to fund up to sixty five percent of the value of the twenty of those twenty seven acres. They can't pay for structures. So the overall purchase price, um, you know, we've got a long way to go. We have a really, um, good outlook on funding. I've had a lot of good conversations with our state agency and our federal agency on the Highlands Conservation Act, which the town was, um, very supportive in putting that forward to expand the geography. We appreciate that very much. Um, and New Britain has as well. And so as of a week ago, the state had sent up the new list of towns that had applied for, um, inclusion in this area. Berlin and New Britain being in that list. That's great. That will unlock funding for not just this project, but future projects. There are also several private foundations we will look to. And also, we would look to the town council and say, is this something where you would like to partner with us and bring a contribution to the table for the acquisition? We can't, you know, we are the Trust for Public Land, we are not a trust fund. And so we, we secure the money. We do not have a trust of funds to pull from. We work day and night to raise money for these things from, you name it. The residents, the general populace will go to the folks that collect his paintings. We'll go to the folks that just love Trust for Public Land for what we do across the country. And we, but we, this is a big number, and we need to leverage big money. And so we would look to the town for a conversation about a future contribution. And that's all I have.
Well, thank, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. You probably got a couple of questions. Don't leave. Thank you. It's great. So just timeline, you said you needed to close by?
Early 2026.
Okay, early 2026, okay.
And, so there's some, some detail there that I'll share, which is, Trust for Public Land, we can buy and hold the property. And so we do that on occasion. So typically, you think of a land transaction as, at closing, the land goes to the permanent owner who, and, and now it's protected. In this case, in a case where Trust for Public Land buys it, we hold it until we have all the money secured. At that point, we record the conservation easement, which is a caveat of the state's grant, and we convey the land to the final owner, Berlin Land Trust. We typically don't like to buy and hold because we don't like to be landlords. We don't like to, it's, it's not our typical MO. We will do it when it's absolutely necessary. And in this case, that there was a developer with a right of first refusal that I needed to make a competitive offer with timing. And so that is why there's a quick closing. We would never, we would never ask for three months. We always ask for twelve or eighteen. But it, it was something that we thought was worth the risk on this one. And so that's why there's such a quick closing. And so we will need to firm up a lot of those commitments before the end of the year. There are certain things we can't control, like the Highlands Grant application is not probably until February, given the government shutdown. We will be borrowing money, and so that borrowed money will need to be paid back. And we will have to make a choice as to whether we exercise our option to purchase by the end of the year. And if we don't think prospects are good, that's where we have to make a tough choice about whether we move forward or not. That is not to sound doom and gloom. This is a wonderful project. It's going to happen.
Well, yeah, yeah, that's, that's good. That's good. We, we got there. That was not good. We want to thank first though, Rich, for making the connection. That's, that's a great connection for our community. That's a great job, absolutely. And certainly, as we have mentioned, and, you know, this piece of property, I mean, Berlin, we preserved, I think, over 2,000 acres, maybe more than that now, and, and, you know, land that is not to be developed in conservation land and all that. So we're always interested in things like this, and certainly with the building on it, makes it more interesting for us. So, yeah, I mean, it's a great opportunity that I'm sure we will take advantage of, but done it.
So you mentioned seeking some foundations. We have several very large foundations in this general area. And I'm hoping that we'll be asking them, you know, you being a non, a 501(c)(3), there, there shouldn't be, you'll be able to make those applications, I hope. There's one in particular that I think beginning of December is when their cutoff is. And I'm sure you know who they are.
I do.
Okay, and you'll be, okay. If you need any letters of support, certainly. Okay.
Well, yeah, absolutely. That's what's going to be my question as you.
As, as a state representative, I'd be more than happy to, you know, send letters of support as well.
That would be fantastic.
Okay.
We'll work on that.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, we'll work on that. If, if, we'll all agree.
To the Bafflin Foundation, I should put that out there. That's not included in our funding stack because we, it's not committed. They haven't made their choice yet. But we did, you know, we are, we are seeking funds. We just don't list them if they're sort of in, in the queue, so to speak.
So what, what do we all think up here? What, what are we, what are we thinking about this? Yes, Sandy. Yes, of course.
My husband, Chris, and I, we moved to Berlin about 15 years ago. And prior to moving here, we were looking probably for about three years or so to find a place that we can have our horse farm. And it was just a fluke that, you know, we were driving through Berlin, and a realtor that we hadn't talked to in years said, hey, did you see this place? We've been looking for years. It never came up in our searches. So we took a ride through Berlin. We drove down Chamberlain Highway. We saw how pretty that was. We kept going down, and we saw that, and we're like, yeah, if this works out, this would be a great place to live. And, you know, we've been lucky enough where we purchased a place in town. We have our horse farm. We're not 27 acres yet. We're close. But I mean, this, that's kind of why we came to this town, because of the history it had, and that it is that farming. So I, I would fully support this.
Great. Charles?
I support it as well. It'd be a crime to lose this, not only to open space, but also the history. And this is great for the historical society and the land trust. It's, everybody wins. We need to do it.
Folks, what are we thinking?
Great presentation. Thank you. If you could, I'd like, if you could send that to us. I'd like to keep, keep a copy of that for my records also, but I, I'm in full support of this, too. It's, can't, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to lose this property.
I agree.
Peter, of course.
And there's no truth that I was there when they developed that property.
I thought you built the house on the properties. Weren't you the architect of the house? Yeah. It, it wouldn't be Kensington without it, let's put it that way, as far as I know with my history, right? So, yeah, yeah. So we're in, we'll work out, you know, definitely letters of support, right? I mean, that's, shouldn't be an issue, and we'll take it from there as you proceed. I'm sure you'll keep in close contact with ourselves, the town attorney and, and town manager. And I, I think, I'm sure we'll get there. From your history, that's a great organization, and we're great. We're, we're happy you got involved, because otherwise it probably would have been a little more difficult. Let's put it that way. And we know it would have been. We, I think we would have got it done, but, what's that? Yes, no doubt, no doubt. So it's good, good, happy news. That's great. Thanks you're, you're here. All right. So, yeah.
Thank you so much for having me.
What do we got here? Just discussion. Yeah, thank you. All right, that's great. Okay.
Thank you all for your support. The next item, this is the, in regards to the Fontanella property, that was also spoken about earlier this evening. And so the, the town council had authorized the town manager to enter into a purchase agreement, to purchase this property for $100,000. And that was subject to a, a grant, a state grant for 65% of fair market value. There was an appraisal on that, and the appraisal came in, it did come in lower. It came in at 95,000, which lowered the grant award because the grant was based on the fair market value. So there, and then there was a couple additional expenses. The survey was a little higher than anticipated, as well as the appraisal and the appraisal review. And the seller did agree to lower the price to 95,000. But we are short, in order to purchase the property, 60, $6,700. And so we do have those funds available in a local, in our local grant match fund. And so Maureen is on as well to, to provide any additional information that you may need. But in order for us to purchase this property, we need to authorize the additional funding of the $6,700.
Okay, thanks, Maureen.
So can I just, I have on my list that it's 7,000? Am I, I had it at 6987? Do I have an old agenda item?
And the funding there does say seven, I guess, on that.
The motion.
Sixty-seven for the motion, yeah.
Now needed. So I would say, let's amend.
To seven.
Thousand. But yes. I think sixty-seven.
The town council I, the town council I had says to authorize use of $7,000 in additional funds.
Yes.
Yes.
Might be a different print.
Amend that motion. Huh? We're good? Yes, okay.
The only other thing, if I may, I did want to, I do believe that part of that ASWA grant does call for parking to be available to the parcel when, as part of a requirement of the ASWA grant, because parking did come up earlier. And again, you know, we're looking along with CFPA and Conservation Commission as to how and where, in what proximity that parking needs to be that will make for access to a greater number of community members besides just those that can walk towards, to a trail, but from their homes or, you know, their own private part, some private parking area they can access. But also keep in, have those areas be safe for the users and the police department and everyone else. So those are concerns the Conservation Commission looks at when looking at parking areas as well. But, you know, access is a requirement.
So, Maureen, do we have a, a timeframe on, you know, what other spots we're looking at? Because as I recall, this property, you can't, you can't get near it, right? Was it kind of landlocked? Did it have access through the trail only?
Yeah, through the trail, but the trail does, but the adjacent town-owned property comes out to the road. And the trail that was, and I think we brought this up at town council previously, but I may have been one of the other meetings I go to, where the trail used to run down Summitwood Drive. And CFPA did relocate the trail that was on Summitwood to the east because the town owns that land as well. And so now hikers don't have to go onto Summitwood. However, there will be a loop trail that is in the plan for the Fontan, what we're calling the Fontanella property, to have just kind of a loop that goes through so that you can go out towards the edge of the, of the ridge, because that's where your, your views are as well. It's at a much higher elevation than its address of zero, Chamberlain Highway. Chamberlain Highway is at a much lower elevation. The property itself is up at the Summitwood elevation.
So Mayor, according to Woody, there is no parking lot or parking spaces that have been planned up at the end of Summitwood there.
Okay, you got ahold of him?
Yeah.
Good, good, okay.
He's in another meeting, so.
Okay. I thought we kind of poo-pooed. We talked about that, but I, I think we never, because of the issues, we didn't want to do it, right? From what I remember? Yeah, yeah, okay. That's what I thought. I mean, I couldn't remember how we found it. So anyway, to alleviate some concerns of the folks on Summitwood, yeah, that's what I thought. We were looking elsewhere. And we'll find something. Yeah, we'll find something. Okay, good. All right. So if we're good, any other comments? We're good? All right, we will go ahead and take a, take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to enter into an amendment to the agreement to buy the property known as MAP 25-4, Block 74, Lot 49, Zero Chamberlain Highway, for the reduced purchase price of $95,000. Subject to review and approval of the Corporation Council, and to authorize use of $7,000 in additional funds from the local grant match account for this purpose.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? Bearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. So, and as we mentioned before, another addition to our open space, so we will continue.
Thank you.
Continue.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Maureen.
Thanks, Maureen. Okay, number eight.
Thank you all for coming out.
Yeah, thanks for coming out, folks. Yep, thanks, Dennis. Late, Dennis, you know, I don't know. You shouldn't be late. Just, just kidding. Yes, yes, we're happier, we're happier here.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, yeah.
And for the history lesson.
The history lesson was very good, actually. That was excellent. Nice, nice job.
Thank you.
No, no, it was great. No, no, yeah, no, because, I don't know, we grew up, you know, I've grown up here most of my life. I mean, I always heard about that, but not in the detail you brought up, so, no, it's great. It's all great stuff. Thanks.
I think I'm hurt. No one wants to stay for my town manager report?
All right, good, cool.
All right, are we ready for number eight?
Yes, we're ready. We're ready.
So last but not least, tonight is, this is the culmination of what we had talked about previously. I spoke with you all about potentially adding a, or bringing back the position of project manager to the town. And this has been something that has, that I have noticed a need for at Town Hall, particularly in the, in the Public Works Department, as well as we've had reduced hours by some staff that, that we, we need some additional manpower for, for lack of a better word, particularly with grant management, as well as the, the number of projects. And you see it, the number of projects that are being sent to the Public Building Commission now. We're, we're doing a lot, and we're making a lot of progress. But we'd also like our Public Works Director to have the capacity to focus on what, you know, the multitude of things that, that, you know, when there's a million different fires to put out, you can't, you can't look at the big stuff sometimes. And so we, working with the Public Works Director, as well as our Human Resource Director, we put together a revised job description for a project manager. And I do believe that this really touches upon what we're looking. It's interesting, because I've, I've also noticed a number of other towns that have recently gone out for project manager positions as well. So Berlin's not unique in this. This would be a union position. It would be in the mid-managers' union in Class B. And so I, I did bring, just so you know, the, the salary range for this would, step one is 80,000 up to 100,000 at step 12. The proposal is that this would, what we'd like to do is if, if the council's in agreement and, and puts this forward this evening, it then would need to go to the finance, to the Board of Finance for their approval as well. They don't meet until November. Once they approve it, should they approve it, we would then post the position the next day, really. We want to get this out, and we would like this to be a mid-year position, mid-fiscal year, that could start just after the new year in 2026. And we do have funding available for this. We have funding in, so Jim Mahoney has a professional services account because of his reduced hours. It's, it leaves us with $48,000 in that account, as well as we do have additional funds in the salary continuation. But remember that this would be a half-year position. So the, the cost, until we, we don't know where it's going to land, most likely around 80, you know, so half that plus benefits, you know, somewhere, let's say 60,000, give or take, for, for this fiscal year, fiscal '26. And then we would build that into the budget for fiscal '27. So, so that is the proposal, and I, and I open it up for questions, comments, concerns, all of the above.
Yeah, I mean, I know we, we talked about this, and, I mean, I guess it's a, it is, it is a good problem to have. We're very busy with Public Works. We have many, many projects going on in town. Many are still obviously underway. Many have been completed, many more to come. So we don't want to run Mr. Mike into the ground. We might have done that a little bit, Mike. We apologize for that, but, you know, it's, it's all, it's all good stuff. I know you're working hard and, you know, but you do deserve some help with all the projects we've taken on and, you know, completed and are due to be completed. So, Charles?
I think this is an important position. We should do it because I think it'll save us money. It's impossible to monitor everything, and the contracts are becoming more and more complex. There's more and more to look at. We could get hit with extras if we're not careful. I think if we get the right person for this position, it could save us a lot of money in the long run.
That's a good point.
I agree with that.
Yes, Sandy. Yep.
Yep.
Somebody working full-time, you know, who has that deadline, I mean, that's somebody that is just, it's a good idea.
Just to.
It was Jim, right, that was doing some of this, and his reduced hours, he could do solely both of them.
Yeah.
Well, that was going to be kind of one of my questions on it, because I I understand they're going to prepare and minister grant programs, but with Jim reducing his hours, I'm assuming there's still going to be a need for some grant writing. Is there anyone who Jim is kind of training to take over for him?
Yes, to that, yes. So you, we applied for a twenty twenty-five connectivity grant recently. We're still waiting to hear the results. We're told that that should be announced soon. Jim did work with the um assistant planner with that to to go over that grant process. That was part of the thought process, bring in uh, do some cross-training on that. We're fortunate that Jim does not plan to to go. As far as I know, we we want to keep Jim as long as we can for for that seven hours uh a week. However, I will tell you that I am getting emails from Jeff on days that he should, you know, i- isn't supposed to be working, which is, which is great. I actually got an email from him in the middle of the night, not too long ago. I said, Jim, what are you doing? And he said he wanted, and it was funny because it was on the the YMCA or the the personal, you know, getting that that property on Patterson Way and um and the work that we're doing with the Y. And so he's very, to say he's not passionate on this, or he's, it would be an understatement. He's very passionate.
You know, he has so much knowledge because he's done it for so long. I just want to make sure we don't lose that if he decides to say, hey, you know what, six months I'm done, or, you know, a year I'm done. I just, if we could take advantage of picking his brain, I think it's.
Agreed. And that's something that this project manager position would allow. Uh I spoke with Jim uh yesterday on this and he he was thrilled that this was being put forward. And and so I have a feeling that uh should the council approve this and and the Board of Finance, that whoever the that project manager is, their phone's going to be ringing quite a bit and it's going to be uh Jim Mahoney on the other end. And so, which I think is great because uh Jim's knowledge is is so vast on not just the the grant knowledge, but Berlin's history.
Yeah.
And and I mean, so uh so all, I'm trying to soak up as much as I can from Jim's as well and and especially, you know, just the grant management, the sheer number of grants that the town has. It's, you know, we're we're talking tonight about extending these grants that we we get so many grants that we have to keep, you know, to keep track of them all. And then a number of them require progress reports, quarterly reports. And so those are things that Jim, we want to use Jim for applying for new grants. A project manager would help us, you know, meet those those requirements that that come with the grants once they're awarded. So uh exactly, exactly. And so uh to Counselor Payness's point, I think that this would mu- could save us money in the long run. Uh Mike has done an excellent job. Um the, his work with the Public Building Commission, I mean, the list of projects goes on. And I'm excited to to talk about in a little bit the the work that we've done on future projects because we we have a lot of great stuff in the works here and I'm really excited about it. And I think uh this position will um be very useful for us going forward.
All right, anyone else? We good? We good? Okay, we uh take a motion.
Move to approve the project manager position within the Public Works Department.
Uh thank you, second. Thank you, Donna. Any other comments or questions? There are none? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, so moved.
Thank you all.
Thanks, thanks, Ryan. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thanks, Maureen, for being here. All right, we are at the town manager's report.
All right.
Hard to believe we're here.
So I have a a few updates uh this evening. We did touch on the YMCA earlier, so I I won't go into that unless anybody has any questions.
Why plan on getting back meeting with us and uh you know, when's that meeting going to happen? So we provided all the documents to them so we can get some type of a status.
So speaking with Don Rittman in his email yesterday, he said that and and um we agree that now's a good time to bring John Benigni into the picture. And so he's setting up that meeting. And so uh he was going to be reaching out to John. Um and so uh Mayor Mark and myself, uh we've been participating in meetings with Don Rittman and their architect engineer um over the summer. And and so uh I'll I'll have an answer shortly, but the meeting should start very soon, especially now that we know that the funds, those grant funds can be used as a pass-through to do a feasibility study. So uh when I, when I told that to Don, he was, he was very excited because obviously the Y is is a nonprofit, they're, you know, funding um is always challenging. And so we have funds to see if we can follow through with this. I mean, it just makes perfect sense. And the state agreed uh when when we um
Oh, that's good.
approached them with that idea. So uh so this seems to be good. I mean, we have the money. Let's, let's do our due diligence, see if this works. And then if it doesn't work, we still have all the site work, as the mayor said, so.
Yeah.
And do you plan a meeting with them, you know, next month, November, the end of this month? Do we have a timeframe or?
I'm hoping that the meeting would be uh within the next couple of weeks, two or three weeks. Uh so to go through the a couple of other things, just so you know, the Splash Pad project.
Yes.
Berlin Pool, I I spoke with uh Jen this uh this afternoon, scope reviews. Uh so for the architect engineers for the project are going to be conducted next week. And so we did the bid for that and their meeting uh next week. So we should uh that's going to work its way, you know, the public uh PBC and then uh back to the council, but that is moving forward. And so uh excited to see that project keep going. I shared with you all an email uh and a report from SH Acoustics today. I'm not sure if you you saw your email. We had received another complaint from a resident on the noise. And uh with a with a audio clip. So I I spoke with Mayor Mark about this and we agreed that we should conduct. And what we did was we conducted surprise sound testing. We didn't tell anyone. I didn't tell the residents, I didn't tell
That's good.
Um Brightfeeds, no one. And so I met uh our uh sound engineer that we've consulted with um last Thursday, this past Thursday, and we did some sound testing from seven to eight. And we we did it right at the facility at Brightfeeds and then up on Worthington Ridge uh where that neighbor who made the complaint resides. And so I shared the report with you in the email. What what um S H A found was that Brightfeeds remains in compliant during daytime hours by, I think it's eleven decibels. The evening, now, I should say it was a little difficult because of the traffic on the Berlin Turnpike. I it was, it was interesting because when I listened to the clip that the uh the resident shared, I could hear a hum in the distance, which which I do believe could be Brightfeeds. You could also hear crickets, which were much louder. I think the resident had their windows open. Uh but when I was there listening, you hear a lot of traffic, a lot of cars. And so S H A had to uh do their testing in between the cars. I mean, short of going out there at at midnight or two in the morning, that would probably be um a time that we might want to revisit this. But the bottom line was that the results of the nighttime noise ordinance was that they were one decibel above Berlin's ordinance. Which, according to the report, S H A deems that negligible. It's not, it's not going to make a big difference. I also would question if that is completely accurate, given the the traffic that's there at that time. Because I actually, as I was reading this report this morning at ten AM and the phone rings and it was Jonathan Fife from Brightfeeds and and as I mentioned, I hadn't told him any of this. And so I said, I can't believe you're calling me, you know, right now, you know, as I'm reading this report. So I did fill him in that we conducted the surprise unannounced sound testing. And um and I told him, and I shared the audio clip now uh with him from the neighbor and and as well. And I, and what I told him was that uh well, one thing he confirmed to me was that their operations do not change. Their their fans do not get louder at nighttime and they don't get quieter in the day. They run at the same consistent speed all the time. So the sound testing that we had previously done back over the summer, you may recall, we had Tessa from S H A go out there at three in the morning. And the the they were under the nighttime noise ordinance at that time. So I spoke with Jonathan today about adding a barrier. I suggested it might be time to think of a wall, something to block the sound because clearly noise is still getting through. My personal theory is that when it gets really, really quiet, when there's no traffic, the neighbors are now hyper-focused on on Brightfeeds. And so um it's not Brightfeeds getting louder at night, it's everything else getting quieter. That's my theory on it. But um so I just want you to know, we're still in talks with with uh Brightfeeds on increasing, they're looking at potentially increasing additional uh met, you know, noise.
And isn't that house, uh, I mean, that house is almost a direct line to them?
Yes.
Yeah, there's nothing in the way.
It's power lines and a.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's, that's, that house is, you know, right, right there, unfortunately.
That spoke, I think at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Had made a comment about Eversource changing from, you know, trimming the trees, changing from wood poles to metal poles. I mean, is that something we could run by the sound engineer to see if he thinks that might have an effect on the sound?
Good point.
Question, yeah.
I mean, it could. I mean, I, you know, I know also in the fall, the leaves falling, they're a buffer for sound too, so more than likely it'll sound a little bit louder in the fall and winter than it would spring and summer. But I'm wondering if there's any validity to the pole change.
It is a great question. I will ask, I will ask that.
Okay. Thank you.
So there's more to, more to come on this. It's, it's not over. We were hoping it was totally over, but um there's more to come.
Well, we we remain on it as we have through the whole scenario.
Mm-hmm. Uh so a a couple of things, uh Counselor Rosso, you weren't here at the last one, but just so you know, that Sage Park lighting project is well underway and.
I was up there.
Okay. All right, so I won't touch on. Okay.
Getting it, getting it done, folks.
Early voting, you know, began. Uh we had sixty-nine voters yesterday, sixty-six today. And uh one quick thing, we, I do want to share some good news. It was shared at the Board of Finance meeting last week. Uh so you may recall, we had a slight windfall last year with our high school um school closeout project where we received a two-point-six-million-dollar reimbursement from the state. We we had been anticipating the the final closeout this year and we anticipated a number in the around four-hundred-thousand dollars, but it's uh it turns out when we received the paperwork and I want to thank Ashley Dorsey on the Board of Ed because she uh was able to identify additional eligibility.
She identified it, right?
Yeah, for open choice funding that um bringing in uh more, much more significant windfall uh to the town this year, similar to that of last year. I.
Right. And so, we, we, by the end of the year?
Uh, yeah, the the paperwork has been signed. It's it's official. We're just waiting. It it should be arriving by the end of the year. It's the, but it's a.
Chuck's in the mail.
It's a big one from uh from the state. And so uh, so I'm pleased to share that good news as we go into a budget season and.
That's good news. We uh, we're sure. We're sure the state. We, we, yeah, maybe we want to just wait and see if uh not, not, huh? Not really a secret, but I don't know, we're sure. Better than a paper. I mean, you know, but with with anything that unfortunately comes from the state, whether it's a grant or whatever, we takes time and uh, you know, we want to make sure. I think it's, it's real. Right? Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, I I think it's real, but but.
I wouldn't be telling you.
No, I know you wouldn't, but no, no, I I don't, I I don't know.
So anyway, well.
Let's wait and see what happens with it, before we put it out there, right? I mean, we can tell the yeah, we just, you know, until we get it in our hands, that that unfortunately, that's been the case with that project, right? How long we waited to get anything back? So who knows what they do in the end with, you know, as they claim shortage of funds in the state legislature, who knows?
Well, well, hopefully we get.
Which is scary, yes, as always.
And then uh so um Attorney Dinaf Fiona, myself, we're on a call this afternoon or this morning with a uh an individual who has a tax agreement with the town and and uh there is a request um to revisit the town's uh tax abatement ordinance and our fixed assessment agreement ordinance. And so um I think we both Jeff and myself think it's a good idea to do that. We would have to convene the ordinance review committee. And I would suggest that we do that uh for our November twenty-fifth meeting of the town council. So I propose that we we set a time of six, six PM. Do you have anything to add?
No, I think.
The program uh was revised in January of twenty twenty-four.
That's right.
The statute changes periodically. So we need to take a look at the statute as it currently sits, take a look at the program, take a look at the concerns that are raised by this particular applicant and figure out what you want to do.
Yes. And that is it. That's my report.
Yeah, thank you. Uh no special committee reports, right, since the last meeting? I don't think so.
That won't conflict with the fire committee postponement.
The fire committee, I believe, won't be until December ninth.
Okay.
Oh, it's December. Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
So no special committee reports? Council Communications?
Yes, I have a few.
Yes, sir.
Okay, first of all, um I got a couple of things to go over, but uh uh there was a ribbon cutting over at Chipotle and there was no notice sent out. I would like to know why. Because the only person, only people that knew about it, what I believe was the mayor and I think Donna, you went to that also. But there was no uh communication sent out uh for that ribbon cutting.
I know we talked about it at town council, but.
It was, it was.
Yeah.
There was nothing ever, usually Chris Edge will send something out.
Yeah.
Say, you know, to every, I mean, there's like a, you know, seventy or eighty people on email. There was nothing sent out about the ribbon cutting over at Chipotle.
I was, yeah, normally Chris sends those emails out.
Because I would have, you know, that was a big one. I would, I would have been there, but I had no knowledge of that actually being uh being done on that day.
I apologize for that. Yeah, I I didn't realize that there wasn't an email.
Tuesday, the town council.
I don't, I don't recall, I don't.
Yeah, because it was, it was something at the golf course.
Yeah.
Then the.
Golf course.
And then something else.
At the council meeting.
I taught, I remember the golf course, but I do not remember anything about Chipotle's ribbon cutting.
I think I may have mentioned it during my my report, but but.
But you're right, there was no email sent, yeah. Yeah, there should have been.
I apologize. I'll, we'll make sure that that does.
You know, we talked about communication before that, you know, on different things that happened, whether it's a senior center or you know, like uh when they revealed that mural and, you know, all the other ribbon comes, cuttings uh uh because I try to go to most of them that I can. Saturday's a busy day in my line of work, but uh you know, uh I'm not going to get into that, but.
Why on Saturday, Mark?
You'd be surprised. I could tell you stories, but that's for another time.
I get through Saturday quickly, then.
So we, I know my office has been working to make the council aware of all, all the like extra type of events that come up. But the, or, you know, the economic development um stuff, we, I typically haven't had a hand in because our.
Yeah, Chris.
That's what the director does.
This is like the first one that I, you know, I haven't got an email on.
Something, I know it came up, it was a, to get Chipotle on board and to schedule this, it was a quick turnaround and it did come up quickly. I'm not sure why an invite didn't get sent out, but we'll make sure that they get sent out going forward for all, for all those events.
And which, which is surprising, Mark, because they always have, you know, you're a, you're a.
That's why I was questioning it, Mark.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't blame you. I don't. I don't remember.
Okay, uh, moving on.
Yes, sir.
Uh Ryan, you did send out the purchasing policy. Again, thank you. Uh going through this, you know, uh, you know, bids, twenty-five thousand dollars and above. Uh, you know, there's a bid number issued, relating documents retained uh for town records. That's good. Looking at the pricing per the year uh, per your policy, seventy-five hundred to fourteen nine ninety-nine uh type of quote, you can get verbal, but there has to be document, documentation provided to finance. Uh fifteen thousand to twenty-four thousand nine ninety-nine, you have to have a written quote documentation to finance. And then uh twenty-five thousand dollars above, we know there's got to be a formal bid. When these, this documentation goes out, I mean, sometimes we have it in a quote sometime, I mean, in the paperwork sometimes, you know, you know, on. I mean, in the paperwork, sometimes, you know, you know, on something, you know, like maybe verbal, we don't. But I think we should have that documentation to support those quotes when we're approving something, uh, which is not really, it's stip, it's stipulated in the policy about the purchasing guidelines, but, uh, what needs to be followed. But I'm just saying, maybe you might want to add something to the policy to say that, you know, we have this documentation. Uh, emergency quotes, three quotes are required, uh, uh, without any bid process. I think that, that's good. Uh, the council can waive the bid requirements. We talked about that before. Okay, but, uh, when we do waive a bid requirement, it's stipulated in the policy that the town manager and the director of finance should know about this prior to being presented to the council. Is that being done?
Yes.
Okay, so, you know, we get, we, you know, we're going to go to a bid requirement. We don't, you know, we don't know this, you know, I wouldn't know it unless there's some type of documentation. Maybe we should have that documented along with the package that says we're going to waive this bid, the town manager's aware of it. You know, the, uh, director of finances, uh, you know, knows about it. Because, you know, we go through, you know, we go through these wa, 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 waving of, uh, bid requirements all the time. And, you know, somebody could just say, yeah, they know about it, but how do we know that they know about it? Follow where I'm coming from?
The town manager knows because, town manager puts together agenda, so he knows about it. And there's a, um, sufficiency of funding document that goes with it. So that comes from finance.
All right, then that document needs to be signed.
You, the sufficiency of funds is, is included in, in.
Okay, this is, all right.
When they're.
Sometimes they're not signed. There was one tonight that wasn't signed. Look, there was one tonight that wasn't signed.
What wasn't signed?
Was it the $7,000?
No, it was, uh, let me go, let me finish what I'm doing here. I'll go back and look. Anything from the deviation policy must be approved by the town manager and finance director prior to executing the purchase. Uh, I'm just saying that, you know, the, I just like to see documentation on, on things. Uh, also in your procedure, looking at section two, uh, excuse me, let me be sure I got the right section here. Under procedures, it, uh, I think you have a typo in there. It says all expenditures made by the town of Berlin, it's, uh, commissions or departments up to the sum of $10,000. And then you have $25,000 in parentheses. It should be $25,000 spelled out, correct?
Yeah.
So then this, this needs to be modified in section 2.1 and 2.2. All right, cause it does say to the sum of $10,000 and you have $25,000 in parentheses.
I'll just point out, I think it was adopted before I got here, but yeah.
Yeah, it's not a problem. I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, I'm, I'm, I was looking at this and I see the sum of $10,000 and then you got $25,000 in parentheses. You know, it's, it's, it's conflicting. It's section two, uh, 2.1 and 2.2 where that's stipulated.
We will get that revised at a future council meeting.
And then I just have, you know, one other question for you is that, uh, you know, we, we come, we, you know, we looked at in two separate instances, uh, town council meetings that, uh, you know, where like we waived the, uh, thing on a snow plowing. Let me just focus on that one. You're just going to use the, you know, award to contract and not go out for bid on that or, you know, uh, that we approved last, uh, last meeting, okay? Why, is there anything, why isn't there something in a, in the, uh, purchasing, uh, documentation states, you know, when a contract comes, we know a contract ends or we're going to renew a contract. Shouldn't it come, be stipulated, should go out to bid like three months prior to when it's going to expire instead of having to go back and forth and say, we're going to waive, waive the requirements because they're a good company?
But so, I mean, yes, to, a lot of times, the companies that we work with, the kind, they will perform, uh, work that meets our standards. And if they tell us that their pricing is the same, a lot of times, a known entity is dealing with a known entity is better than rolling the dice. We talked about, uh, the, this bid on sidewalks this evening. And we talked about how we got a longer.
That's something totally different.
Well, no, it's, it relates.
Relates, but I mean, it's, and.
Can I, let me just finish because we, we talked about getting a, a lower award, but then being concerned with the quality of that work and, and doing our due diligence, talking with West Hartford to make sure that they do good sidewalks and we don't end up with, with shoddy work. And so it does relate because, uh, if we have a, a good snowplow company that we have a relationship with that has maintained fair pricing, I think it's in the town's best interest to maintain that, that relationship. Provided now, if there's a, a, uh, an increase and, and our director or whoever deems that to be substantial, well, then let's go out to bid. Let's see, let's see. But if we have a good relationship, a lot of times it's nice to work with people that are good to work with. And so having that and having fair prices, there, there's a, there's a reason why, um, the council was wise enough to include that ability to waive the bidding process because sometimes it's in the town's best interest. Uh, but I will say, I totally agree with you that I think that we've gotten bid waiver happy in, in Berlin. And I think that we can rein it in. I'm.
That's, that's my, my point exactly.
I agree with you and.
But, but let me ask you this, Ryan, what happens then? Just still stick with the snowplow contract. What happens then if you go out to bid, you find a reputable company and you save $15,000?
That's a, that's a good thing. Yeah, there's, I'm not.
You won't know that unless you go out and bid it.
Well, I will tell you, prices are not going down really anywhere these days. And so when you go out to bid, uh, you can also at the same time sour relationship that you have with a, with a company that's been, that's been doing well and being like, for instance, we, there was a bid waiver for a tree removal company.
I, that's.
You recall, they were going up and Mike and.
3.5 and 3.7%. And he said he would go back and read, because that's the one I questioned again too, that he would go back and revisit it at the end of the year and we would have no increase for this year.
We had, and, but that relationship, so that, that company kept their rates flat because you pushed back, which was, which was good. That was, that was saving the, the taxpayers of Berlin, uh, money by doing that. But at the same time, uh, that company is, I would say, Mike had indicated that they're good to work with and they, and that proves it by doing that.
But they're not the only company that's good to work with. That's my point.
They don't, that, that.
Yeah.
Snowcon, for example, and you can have somebody come in and do a lowball and then your next, the next year, the prices are through the roof. You've lost the relationship that you have with the other side. Everybody's higher. I mean, you, you know, there is validity to staying.
When our contract was bid, he was the only bidder.
That's what I thought. I thought, I was going to say that he was the only bidder on that contract.
For the snowplow.
The snowplow.
Okay, well.
Well.
Did, did.
He agreed to extend it.
Not this year, he wasn't, because they didn't, we didn't go out this year.
We didn't, this.
We didn't do this year, but before he's been the only bidder.
The same price.
Yeah, and that has occurred.
So when we do the, that has occurred, on extensions, we had bid it before. And so they did win the initial bid. Uh, and, and so, um, a lot of times it does, it is in the town's best interest to keep those relationships. If it's working, i- i- it's good, but if it doesn't, I agree.
But you, but you never know until you ask.
True, that's true.
And I'll tell you what, you know, we're going to be, if we're going to be crazy on these bid waivers, you know, I'm going to question each and every one of them. I'll tell you that right now.
Spoken to my staff about this and we are, we're trying to tighten the.
I, I, I gotta say, Mark, just historically, having been here for 10 years, I gotta say that, uh, you ain't seen nothing, okay, from the past? That's how our debt ran up. So I'm just telling you, we've, we've strengthened a lot of things in town hall with bids and who's getting the contracts and all that. That's how we got to 107 million dollar debt, okay? That's how we got down to 55 by watching stuff like this. We've watched that very closely. Cause I still don't know after 10 years where the town spent all that money. So other than the new high school. So it, it's much different. There's much more responsible folks in town hall than there were before. I'm sorry. That's just what I saw. That's what I saw and we've really worked on that.
But there's room for improvement.
We could always improve it. I'm not saying that, but it's not, it's not some free for all. And I, I really am offended by even hearing that, that we've had a ton of, we don't. I mean, that's why we send all our projects to public building. That's why we, that's why we do this.
Mark, that we're.
I don't think we have. I don't see we waive a lot of funds. I don't see that.
We did.
Well, I don't see it.
You just said we, we're going, we're, uh.
A couple lately we have, I don't.
But I mean, he, Ryan just said we're going a little crazy with our bid waivers.
We put into place a computerized system where we can put things out to bid. The department heads can do it directly. They don't have to go through purchasing anymore.
Yeah, that's why.
A month or two ago, I have to use it more. I'm, we're on the same page. It's just so many service contracts, especially the smaller ones. Those are very trickery because you got to call that guy at three in the morning, you know?
Like the fertilizer at the golf course, that's another one. I mean, that was one we did, right? The 30 grand for the fertilizer, but, I mean, that, that was the best deal that we could get. I mean, that's from our experts at the golf course, so.
We fought it out years before too, trying to use the generic and the stuff didn't grow the grass right. That's why we left it to the experts that run the golf course.
It's usually a reason why we do it.
That's a, each bid waiver that we've done, there's always been a reason why it's in the best interest of the town of Berlin to do the bid waiver. So oftentimes, whether it be because for the golf course, that, that we've tried the generic and it just doesn't work as well or, um, we're extending a, a bid that we've already had, uh, and it's worked well because they were previously the low bidder and we're just extending that agreement on. I mean, there's, there's always a reason, um, and so, uh.
Well, then maybe we should have a little bit more documentation and you won't have to listen to me ask why there aren't any other bids.
You're, you're doing.
No, we get it, we get it. I don't.
This is, you, this is exactly what you should be doing, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Anything to add, attorney? Doctor, any other towns doing anything that we could pick up on that's better, worse, whatever?
I mean, some, some, some of the larger municipalities have purchasing manuals that identify conditions under which bid waivers can be sought.
Oh, okay.
Um, there's also dollar thresholds, although most of the stuff that I've seen, Berlin wave is on the small dollar contracts. There's not really seven-figure bid waivers going on. Um, but you know, ordinarily, what you see it for is pretty much limited to specialized services. Other than that, it should go out to bid. And, and even when you're waiving on specialized services, you ought to have some limitation, you know, on how many, how many consecutive years you can have the contract in place without putting it out to bid. Cause there are changes in the market, you know? You put something out to bid in 2022, you know, during COVID or whatever. You put it out to bid in 2026, you may get more bidders. So it is a, it is a good idea from time to time to test the market and see, see what's out there. And, I mean, I understand the point that some vendors, I've seen in some towns, vendors say, if you put this out to bid, I'm not bidding it because, you know, I've done the work for years and done a good job and that's not fair to me. Somebody's going to come in and lowball and get the contract over me. I think you really have to take it on a case by case basis. But having some general guidelines is a good idea in terms of factors and how they're presented to you before you put it on agenda for the council seeking the bid waiver. You know, making sure it checks some boxes and isn't just a arbitrary waiver.
Good? Yes, sir, more?
Nope, I think, yeah.
Good?
I, I think I'm good now.
Thanks, Mark.
So, thank, well, thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it.
I had two things.
Yes, yes, Andy, yes.
I will try to be quick as possible.
Yeah, take as long as you need.
Brian, one of the things, I, I didn't bring it up the last meeting, but one of my neighbors caught me over the weekend about stockings brook and the lack of water and how they saw the dead fish and frogs. Um, so I just wanted to, to follow up on that.
I almost brought it up at the last meeting when we had Ray here because the first thing I did when you, when you brought it up, uh, a couple of meetings ago was I went to see Ray in the morning and I said, I got a concern about the, this brook, what's going on? And, and Ray, the first thing he said was, well, you know, we're in a big drought right now. And so he, he believes that the reason why, uh, that, that brook is dry is due to, uh, just a severe lack of, of rainfall. I will say, um, that we're not alone in that. I know Middletown has a pond that inexplicably has dropped, um, uh, the water level of, and, and they're actually trying to investigate why. Uh, they do think drought has, uh, been a reason for this. So i- this is something that's been going on in, in our area. And so I don't have an easy answer for you, but I would say, give it another month or so as we come into more of a, it's typically a wetter period of time. That situation should resolve itself. I mean, at least, this is what I, I did speak with, with Ray about this and, and I'm going to continue looking. For what it's worth, I have a, a stream next to my house right now and, and it's bone dry. And even, even when we gotten the rains that we've gotten, it's still bone dry. So, and I think it's just because the ground is just soaking it all up right away that, you know, we're, we've just had very little rainfall.
Okay. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up, um, for my neighbors, um, they had some concerns regarding, and I, I mentioned this to you earlier, Mark, um, that I was going to bring it up, um, H2O farms on Chamberlain Highway. Um, their concern at this time, um, has to do with the electrical. Um, from what they're telling me, and I did look, I, I don't know about electrical, but the original plans had all the electrical going underground service. Um, and one of the neighbors saw that when they put the service on the side of the building, it was going up, not down. Um, so there's major concerns that they're going to want to do the electrical above ground instead of below ground. Um, and the reason why they're kind of getting concerned with that is from, and again, this is from what I've been told, is that this would be like the third time